Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean O'Brien, the town moderator. I'm honored to call to order the annual town meeting. Today is May 14th. The time is 9:16. We have a quorum of 101 residents present. The tellers have been sworn, and they are Mr. Basler, Mr. Ruder, and Mr. Armstrong. The warrant, having been previously declared and properly noticed with the constable's return to service, as tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. Can everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask everyone to take a moment of silence for those who have passed, those residents in Kingston who continue to find strength, resilience, and courage to endure through these challenging times. Would everyone just take a moment? There's exits to the rear. There's also exits to the front left and the front right as you face the stage. The bathrooms are outside. If you have any conversations, can you take them outside? We can now hear again. We're not at the mall where it was tough to hear. So voices carry pretty well in here. So if you have any conversations that isn't addressing town meeting, could you just take them outside? So the rules of town meeting. Town meeting is run per town meeting time in our local bylaws. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to the microphone, wait to be recognized, state your name and your address. Please keep comments to under two minutes, and you may approach the microphone a second time, both only with new information. Please keep these additional information to under one minute. Motions to amend may be made but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raise issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, or integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interfere with your ability to hear, speak, participate in town meeting, please yell out question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you are trying to speak at the microphone or approaching the microphone. Please do not stand in doorways and keep aisles clear except approaching the microphone. I hope to continue to have a spirited debate and that this meeting both supports and challenges the issues presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you cannot debate and then make the motion. Please be respectful to everyone. Remember, it's okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand the rules?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I said the bathrooms. Are we ready to go?
Woo!
We have an open in motion?
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Kate Federoff, Town Council. Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Matthew Darsh, Water Department Superintendent. Bob Monahan, Waste Water Department Superintendent. Jason Silva, Community Development Director. Carol McCoy, Finance Director, Town Accountant. Tina Betty, Human Resources Manager. Matt Pennella, Conservation Agent. Jill Prue, Superintendent of Schools. Matt Durkey, Schools Facilities Director. Christine Healy, Business Director for Schools. Gloria Mitchell, Assistant Town Administrator. Ken Stone. David Pepe. Ian Norrie.
Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, as when you came in, you saw and it was on the website what's known as a consent agenda. These are to expedite the meeting and address those matters that require action but tend to generate little or no debate. I'm going to entertain a single motion which moves several articles in one. I will read the article's number and description. And if a member of the town meeting raises and states "hold," I will remove that from the consent agenda. If not, we will move these articles in one motion. Does everyone understand? Article one, annual reports. If you want to hold it to debate it, just yell out "hold." Article four, 23 wastewater enterprise budget. Article six, transfer from water surplus revenue to water stabilization fund. Article eight, 23 waste enterprise budget. Any holds? Keep going. Article nine, authorize revolving accounts. Article 10, renewable energy enterprise fund budget. Article 14, wage and personnel bylaw amendments and compensation schedule. Article 15, Kingston Police Lieutenant's Contract. Article 16, transfer to employment liability reserve funds. Article 17, transfer to post-employment health insurance liability fund. Article 18, transfer funds to stabilization fund. Article 23, Chapter 90 funding. Do I have a second? Seeing no holds. All those in favor of passing Articles one, four, six, eight, nine, 10, 14, 16, 17, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 23? Say aye? Up, yes ma'am. Sorry, I missed the last one. I had my glasses.
Could you just restate Article eight as FY23 wastewater enterprise budget? I believe you said waste. I just want to make sure it's recorded correctly.
Sure. Thank you for correcting me.
Thank you.
I just now need specs, and I'm trying not to use them, so I will put those on. And I used to make fun when people kept their glasses down. I didn't know you lose your sight when you take them off. So just wastewater enterprise budget. So again, one, four, six, eight, nine, 10, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 23. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. Article number two. Do you need a second?
Article two, move the town... Article number two, move the town transfer $417.20 from free cash for the purpose of paying outstanding prior years' bills. And again, just like the motion says, this article is, will fund outstanding invoices from Amazon for the library in the amount of $417.20 for purchases before July 1st, 2021 from free cash.
Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll move the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number three.
Hi, everyone. For those who may not know me, I'm Deborah McLean. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. As it's a beautiful day, we have a lot of articles to talk about. I'll keep my comments quick. I'd like to thank you all for coming out to participate today in this process, and I would also like to thank the department heads, boards, committees, and the administration for the hard work and compromises necessary to produce the budget we present to you today, which I'm pleased to say is balanced. The fiscal year 23 proposed budget represents a modest 2.8% increase over the current adjusted 22 budget, which is a $1.3 million increase. The budget is funded through the levy, new growth, and other revenues and funds available to provide the services that you all expect in town. Within the budget, education is the largest portion, accounting for 54%, followed by public safety at 15% and employee benefits at 14%. A majority of revenues, approximately 78%, utilized to fund the budget comes from property taxes, with another 12% from state aid and 10% from local receipts such as automobile taxes and ambulance revenues. Today, we will vote on nearly 2.3 million of capital projects, many that will address the aging infrastructure and equipment around town. While we find ourselves with a solid free cash balance of nearly $1.9 million, about a million dollars of this balance will be proposed in some of these articles to fund some of these projects I spoke about. That will leave us with a free cash balance of about $500,000. While that is lower than we would desire, we anticipate the town will regenerate this free, additional free cash by the end of June 30th. As I close my remarks, I would like to ask you to be mindful of the unforeseen financial difficulties that fiscal '23 and beyond may present due to COVID combined with sizable capital projects on the horizon to continue addressing aging infrastructure and the always-present pressures to maintain or increase services. While we move through today's articles, I ask that you take into consideration the votes by each board or committee to help you decide your vote. You will notice that some articles have a wide range of votes, and therefore I encourage you to ask questions to fully understand the votes, as they are reflective of countless hours of digging into each issue by the various boards and committees. So please, I ask you to ask questions, especially when you see these votes are split. Thank you again for your time and support. So with that, I will read the Article three.
Please.
Okay. Motion for Article three. Move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds in the Treasury as sum of $49,365,858 to be expended to defray town charges for fiscal '23 as printed in the warrant. Raise and appropriate $48,567,819, the sum of $407,254 to be transferred for the water enterprise revenue, the sum of $311,484 to be transferred from wastewater enterprise revenue, and the sum of $69,301 to be transferred from the septic betterment fund balance, the sum of $10,000 to be transferred from the inspectional services revolving fund.
I'll open it up for debate. Seeing none, I will move the question. This was approved by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, 5-0. All those in favor of passing the budget as printed in the warrant, Article three, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Budget passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Skipping ahead, and if I make a mistake, someone please correct me, but I believe the next article is five.
Yeah, correct.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $75,000 from the water surplus revenue to be expended by the Water Commissioners for the grading and repaving of Whistler Lane.
Open it up for debate.
Perhaps just a short explanation, because I know we've got a lot to do today, but what happened was we had a water main break, and as a result of the water main break, there was significant damage to Whistler Lane. We're asking that we take some money out of our surplus revenue to fix it.
Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing nothing, I'll move the question to a vote. It was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, 4-0. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to Article number seven.
Move that the town authorize the use of eminent domain to the Water Commissioners to acquire the land consistent of map 97, Lot 14, off Pottingways Road, and map 97, Lot 11, off Muddy Pond Road. At the special town meeting we had in December, we came before you and asked you for permission to have eminent domain so that we may, if necessary, use that as we pursue a piece of property that we want for our next well site. I've been in Kingston for 47 years. I've been a water commissioner for 20, between 20 and 30 years. I lost count after a while. And what I can say is that we have built a lot of water department infrastructure over that time. One of the things I've also noticed, especially as a water commissioner, that less and less land becomes available for infrastructure. We're at the point now where well sites are very difficult to find because it requires a significant amount of land that has to be protected so that the water underneath that is useful and potable. We have identified what we hope to be our last well site, which is located on a piece of property that is adjacent to our Tracopond well site. If we're able to acquire that land, we can transfer the water from that well to the treatment plant at Tracopond, which would save us the problem of building a treatment plant someplace else if we had to find another site somewhere else to build the well. And the site that we have identified is landlocked. The people that own the property cannot access their property without going over someone else's land. We received an appraisal for the value of that land. We came before this body a year ago and asked for you to fund the purchase of that land, and you did. We have what we consider to be a very fair estimate of the value of that land. We asked you for more money than the value of that land in the event that the negotiations result in us having to come up with more money. We approached the owners of the land and asked them if they would sell it to us, and in the middle of all of that, the person that owned the property died. It went into probate, and it's been there for a long time. And as a result, we have been kind of sitting here waiting for an opportunity to make an offer to the estate so that we can purchase that property. We have sent numerous emails and text messages and have some response, but not extensive response and certainly not timely response, to the point where six months ago you said no. We're now six months later, and we're no closer to acquiring the land. ARPA money has a ticking clock to it. If we want to get help from the federal government to build this well, we're going to need some ARPA money to do it. The clock is ticking. If we kick this can down the road again, I can't guarantee you that there'll be federal money available to help us build this well. Also, if you've noticed, there's quite a bit of building going on in Kingston. As a result of the building going on in Kingston, the demand for Kingston water has increased significantly. You'll notice very soon that water ban signs are going to go up, and we're going to go into the normal, routine water ban system that we've had in place for a few years that essentially was required of us by the state DEP. We may have to be increasingly more stringent on the allowability of water for watering lawns, gardens, washing cars, et cetera, et cetera, because the bottom line is, we as a water department can't hold back development. If people have a piece of property and they want to hook up to the Kingston Water Department, they have a right to do that. So bottom line is this, folks. We're going to need another well. We're going to need it soon. And waiting to get a hold of this land, waiting to be able to negotiate the purchase of this land is problematic if we kick it down the road too much further. We're not trying to take advantage of somebody. We're offering them the value of that land based on an assessment by a professional. You have agreed to fund more than that if necessary. All we need now is the land. We can't do anything without ownership of that land. We can't begin any of the permitting processes. We can't, there's nothing we can do to develop that well until we have ownership of that land. So what we're asking you to do is give us the permission, in the event that we can't work out, we can't get people to sit down with us and negotiate this, that we can move forward to purchase this piece of property and build another well. One of the things I'd like you to understand, too, is, on the Board of Water Commissioners, we have three members. One has been a water commissioner over 40 years. One has been a water commissioner 25 years or so. That's me. And we have another one that just got reelected for his first reelection, so he's been a commissioner for three years. We are unanimous in this. We have three different people from three different generations who have a wide range of experience in the town of Kingston. You elected them to run your water department. And what we're asking you, again, is to give us permission in the event that we need it, and we hope we don't, and quite frankly, I don't think we're going to. I think at some point, this estate's going to get settled, and when it's settled, they'll sit down with us, and it'll be a relatively quick negotiation. But in the meantime, we need to have certainty that we can start putting things in gear, get things moving to build this well. And we're asking you to trust us, that we know what we're doing, and that we're not taking advantage of anybody who owns any land in the town of Kingston. We're not using eminent domain as a crudle. We just need to have an opportunity to purchase this land in a timely matter.
A second? Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jean Coleman, 20 Howlands Lane. I do remember the article from the fall, because essentially it sounded as though we were not willing to get this far into the process with the current owner's estate. But I do want to point out that it's still a 050, Board of Selectmen unfavorable to this article, and I was hoping that one of them could give some insight as to whether anything's changed from what they understand on the article. And then I do want to point out that when we talk about this water ban and everything else, I've had black water now for a couple of weeks due to the flushing. So if we're going to start banning water use for watering lawns and everything else, maybe we can slow down on the flushing also so that I can have clean water to wash my clothes and bathe my children, and drink. So I'm sorry if that comes across as harsh. I've had black water now for almost two weeks. So I understand the need for the well, but I still, with a 050, I'm wondering if there's more information that the Board of Selectmen can present as to why they are unfavorable. Thank you.
The information we received is actually in the handout, so if you want to take a look at page, pages 14 through 16? Those are all of the communications that we received to review ahead of our meeting to vote. It details sort of the timeline, as Mr. Kostka detailed. So the process started in 2019, and it goes through, I think the most recent email that we received was March 17th. I'm not sure if there's more frequent, if there's been more recent communication.
Could the Board of Selectmen just give us the Cliff Notes as to why they don't support this?
Well, we didn't discuss it much. Didn't require a lot of discussion in our meeting, but I would say I'm looking at the email from March 17th where the executor says, "I was hoping the estate settlement was going to be completely agreed upon before now, but unfortunately, that's not the case. The lawyers are working on the last details, and then I'll be able to tell you the status of the Kingston parcels. I would never have believed this would take so long if anyone told me back in 2020. Seems like everything's been extra slow and taken extra effort to accomplish." And our water superintendent said that they understood, that he understood, and everything does seem to take longer to get done these days. So she seemed like she was being reasonable and communicating with us, and I don't know. That's...
Thank you. To add to that as well, last year was a rush to the gun, in my opinion, on this article. And if anybody's ever been through probate in an estate, they understand that the real estate takes a long time, and it's a very sensitive issue for people. And I think that when we rushed to judgment, like we did last year, it set a precedent for the owner to say, "Oh, this is how the town operates." And I think we need to give due process to the owners to have time to get through probate, which is what they're saying. March 17th was not that long ago, and I still think we're rushing to the gun. And it seems like they're still favorable to the sale, and I hope that happens. I think we all hope that happens. But I think we need to be very careful when talking about eminent domain as a town, especially when we're talking about going through probate. This isn't somebody just sitting there waiting for it to be sold. They're trying to get their ducks in a row, and it takes time to do that. If anybody's been through that in a state sale, or when somebody passes away and gets through probate, it's a very, very difficult process. So that was my reason for voting no on it, was that, number one, eminent domain should be leaned upon as very careful. You should be very careful about that. And also, if you see some of the communications of her being a little bit agitated, there's a reason for that.
Thank you. Would you like to respond? Go ahead.
Coleman Howell, 31 Howlands Lane. I spoke to this at the last town meeting, and I'm still opposed to this. That being said, what is up with the water? The water is worse than any third world country that I've ever lived in when turning on a faucet, and it's just totally inexcusable, I believe. So...
This isn't part of the article, but it's important, because if I had brown water, I'd want to know. So could you just briefly...
But why it's important, why I'm speaking to this is because of the fact that we have to go and solve problem number one before jumping on to problem number two. So this brown water's been continuing for years now, even without the flushing. And again, I believe it's unexcusable. And you've been on the Board or Commissioner for years now, so I think it has to be resolved, and the people have to be told the truth, what's wrong with the water in Kingston, that it's coming out of the faucet on a regular basis, black, literally black, as if it were coffee, or coming out of a toilet that's been defecated in. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and actually, I'm glad somebody did ask that question. Sometimes, as a water commissioner, we get a little bit insulated in our building because we have meetings and we talk about stuff, and a lot of times, the assumption is that the general public is as aware as we are of some of the things that we're dealing with. In the town of Kingston, back a number of years ago, we started seeing infiltration of manganese in our water supply. I can tell you, when I first became a water commissioner, there was no manganese in any of our wells. When we built the Tracopond well site, we do water sampling, we do prolonged pumping to test the quality of the water, there was zero manganese. Manganese has infiltrated into the groundwater in the entire southeastern Massachusetts. Any town that currently now is not filtering their water will be filtering their water soon because we all have the same manganese problem. For those of you that have been here a while, you realize, when you drive down Indian Pond, I'm sorry, Route 80, you'll see that there is a water department building. That's our treatment plant for our Tracopond. For the people that are in that section of the town who have the worst manganese problem, they don't know what you're talking about. Their water is perfectly fine. It's fine because we have a treatment plant that takes the manganese out of the water. We approached the Finance Committee, and we approached you to ask for a second treatment plant, which is on the verge of being turned on in about a month. Sometime in June, they're going to be turning on the second treatment plant. When that treatment plant gets turned on in a relatively short period of time, the brown water in the other section of town will be gone. Now, to understand why you're getting brown water now, not hard to figure out. We are required to flush water mains to get rid of various debris that develops in water mains over time. That's a requirement by the DEP. It's also prudent. To keep your water clean and safe, we need to flush the water mains from time to time. When you have a section of town that's had significant manganese infiltration into their water, when you flush those pipes, you're going to get a significant amount of manganese that has settled at the bottom of those pipes that's going to get stirred up. That's what's going on right now. It's not anything new. This has been going on for a while. The problem always is, when there is extensive water use, you see much more of the manganese than you have less water use. In the wintertime, there's very few manganese complaint calls. They start when people start watering their lawns and filling their pools. We are flushing because we need to. We missed a year of flushing because of COVID. That's one of the reasons why there is that much manganese in the mains right now. So yeah, I've been a commissioner for a long time. I've known about this problem for a long time, and for anybody to suggest even for a second that we haven't taken it seriously, that we haven't made it priority number one, ask the Finance Committee when we approach them. And they don't want us to have to build this. We don't want to have to build a multimillion-dollar treatment plant. Would rather do anything else. We tried everything else. The only thing that works is this treatment plant.
And that'll be turned on in the next 30 to 60 days?
So I think within the next 30 or 60 days.
And that should alleviate the problem on that part of town?
It will, over time. It takes time to get the water...
Thank you.
...manganese out.
Do you mind if I just address the gentleman in the back?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Kevin Johnson, 5 Summer Street. I just wanted to ask when a motion like this could be brought up again? Do we have to wait a year or what about the eminent domain?
It could be brought up in the fall.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Elaine Fury, 60 Cole Street. Two things. I think the example of how long it takes something to get online is the water treatment for the manganese. It takes forever to get these things moving, permitted, and operational. That said, Mr. Costa, what happens if eminent domain is not approved today and the property owner does not agree to sell the land?
Then, in the special, assuming we have a special in the fall, and we've pretty much had specials most years that I've been in town, I'll be standing before you... much had specials most years that I've been in town, I'll be standing before you, pretty much reading the exact same thing, making pretty much the same plea.
But, I mean, what if there is, oh, for the eminent domain?
Yep.
Okay, but, I mean, if, if you come to a standstill, that's basically what I want to know. If you come to a standstill, what happens? We have to look for another site that...
We, I, no. This is the site that we're going to be building the well on. We will work out a deal with the landowners to do it. I've been confident from the beginning that they were gonna, they would accept our offer of the assessed value of that property, we could move on. They haven't been able to do it because it's in probate, we understand. What we're asking simply is to give us an additional tool in the event that we can't sit down with these people and negotiate this, for whatever reason. Up until now, it's been tied up in probate. After that, I don't know, we haven't sat down and negotiated with them. It's a landlocked piece of property, is several acres, but it's useless land to anybody except, quite honestly, us, because we're one of the abutters.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, I would like to say, thank you to...
Could you just identify yourself?
Thomas Bouchard, 6 Quail Run, sorry. I would like to say that historically, we've had great water, and a lot of that has to do with the stubbornness of the water commissioners. That stubbornness has brought us very good water for a very long time, and I know about the manganese, and that will clear up. I do have a question, maybe through the moderator to Town Council. If we, if we vote to do eminent domain and take this property, does that speed up the process if it's, if it's still in probate, probate?
So, essentially... Oh. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. So, essentially, it could truncate that process, for sure, because it would transfer title, the money would be held and distributed to the heirs, whether it be, I, I don't know exactly how this property is held, whether or not it's a joint tenancy or whatever, but the, the funds would then be distributed to the appropriate parties, but we would, or, not we, you, the town of Kingston, would have ownership of the parcel as soon as the taking occurred. Of course, there are procedural steps to do that. Specifically, you have to send out a notice of taking, have the Board of Selectmen do an order of taking following a public hearing, and the parties who have an ownership interest could object at that hearing. There could be challenges later on down the road to challenge the amount of money because under takings, you have to pay fair market value, so it could result in litigation if that, if there's no agreement as to what fair market value is. But theoretically, it could truncate that process.
Okay, thank you.
Just one follow-up question. When does the requirement of another well become critical to the water supply in Kingston?
Now, with, with all of the building that we've seen in town, drive around town, with all of the building that you're seeing, the water, water supply is increasingly stressed. One of the consequences of the stressed water supply is the brown water that people are feeling, but we'll be clearing that up in a month or two, and that will no longer be a problem. What will be a problem is volume. And when, in the summertime, when we're pumping between two and three million gallons a day, and we are limited in how much water we can take out of the Jones River watershed, and this piece of property is not in the Jones River watershed, which is why it's such an important piece to us, put all of those pieces together. And what I can tell you is that we need the water now, you're gonna start, if we have a dry summer, you're gonna see increasingly stricter water, water restrictions now. And that's before we start renting the, the apartments that are where Sears used to be, which is gonna be a significant draw on, on the Kingston's water supply. We need to add this well, we need to get started on it. From permitting to turning the faucet on to get water in, we're talking about a significant amount of time. When you're dealing with the state DEP, and by the way, it's a good idea because they keep a good eye and make sure that everything is done properly, make sure that your water is gonna be clean, make sure that we cross every T and dot every I. It's important, but it's time-consuming.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Bob, if I could. Does the, the piece of property we're talking about...
Hold on, hold on, raise your hand.
Bob, the piece of property that we're talking about is landlocked. Does the town own all the surrounding property? So, so if this one didn't go through, there's a chance that someone that was, else is that is a butter couldn't possibly want it and would become a bidding war for the property?
I believe the other abutter of consequences is, speaking in the mic, what's the energy company we got?
Eversource.
Eversource. Eversource has, it might even be all of the other land, it's town of Kingston and Eversource. So, Eversource won't allow people to get through their property, and it'd be up to us if we wanted to allow people through our property.
But we wouldn't get into some bidding war with Eversource.
No, no, because Eversource doesn't want it.
Ma'am?
Carol Wolfsey, 29 Wapping Road. I have a question. It seems that we're in sort of an end game in terms of water resources. This well would do it. Is there any interface between the water department and the planning board to limit the construction of new residences? Because the numbers now have increased to such an extent that we have no place to go after this well is used.
Well, state law pretty much gives people on property the right to use their property as long as they're not violating any, any rules and regulations. So, somebody who has property in the town of Kingston, who chooses to build on it and wants to hook up to the, to the Kingston Water Department, we have to let them do it. They'll sue us and they'll win. We have to let them do it. So, we cannot be used as an agency that will restrict development. That, that can't happen. I learned that my first year on the Board of Water Commissioners, because quite frankly, that was one of the things I thought we'd be able to do as water commissioners, the answer is no. We cannot restrict building, what we can do is continually decrease the amount of water available to you for watering gardens, for watering your lawn, for washing your cars, things like that. We can consistently lessen the amount of water available to you as more and more people hook up. We have this amount of water, when you put more straws into it, the, the water's gonna decrease, and we have to limit the amount of water that comes out of each straw.
So, in order to limit construction, would the town need to make changes in the bylaws?
I'm guessing that's true, that's out of my pay grade. I'm, 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 right now, strictly thinking about water.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Valerie Mossard, Town Planner and resident, 1 Schofield. Question through the moderator to Town Council. If the town had an adequate facilities bylaw, would, would we be able to render ourselves able to manage our water supply?
Yeah, I mean, that... Oh, closer? Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, I think there are possibilities for enacting a bylaw, whether it be a water moratorium or something like that, that could constrain development in the town. It would have to be explored in a really kind of global way to figure out how to, how to use that process. Of course, then you've, you know, eliminated your development growth in the town.
It sounds like it's urgently needed when talking to the water commission. It sounds like it's urgently needed in hearing from our water commission, so perhaps we need to explore that before the next town meeting to understand better what our restrictions are. Thank you.
Ma'am? We'll get back to it, I'll give you a last one.
Emily Davis, 24 Clifton Drive. I just had a question about the ARPA funds being used for this and the, the timeframe, because a concern of mine would be that the process is prolonged to the point where ARPA funds couldn't be used, and the impact and the burden of the financing for this would then fall on us more as residents. Can somebody talk a little bit about that funding mechanism and what the impact could be on residents if we aren't using ARPA funds?
Town Administrator?
Thank you. So, just to give you a little background on the ARPA funds, we, as town departments got together, all the different departments in town, including the school department, identified all the projects that would be ARPA-eligible. And at this point, the, the well that's being discussed now is not on the list of ARPA-funded projects. That being said, there is a contingency set aside for unexpected related, ARPA-related expenses that the water commissioners could come and ask to use a portion of that unallocated reserve from the, the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds, I believe, I'm gonna look for some help here, I think it's December 31st of '23? They have to be expended by?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So, at this point, as I mentioned, we have not allocated, we have not allocated, nor has the Board of Selectmen approved, the use of ARPA funds for eminent domain on this well. But there is funds available to do so.
Sir, go ahead.
I think the answer to that question is, we don't have a plan. If you don't have a plan, you can't get it funded. And we don't have a plan because we don't own any land. Once we own the land and we can put a plan in place, all of these things then follow. That's one of the reasons we've been as persistent as we have. It was not comfortable for me to be at the special town meeting and have you all vote no. I knew, standing in front of you today, after zero-five vote by the Board of Selectmen, this was gonna be a hard sell. But I'm here because it's the right thing to do for, for the water department, it's the right thing to do for the ratepayers of the town of Kingston, it's the right thing to do for the town of Kingston. And that's what we were elected to do, so that's why we're here.
Thank you, sir.
There's one other thing too, though. The discussion prior to this over whether we can put restrictions to prevent people from building or something like that, for all intents and purposes, that's a taking of someone's property. And we're here asking you for eminent domain, and you're talking about using a taking of property instead, it's the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, just a couple more comments to add. Jean Coleman, 20 Howlands Lane. I would, again, encourage you to please vote no on this article, because when we talk about time, I've had brown water for four and a half years. We were initially told it would be done in January 2022, then we were told May of 2022, now we're told hopefully 30 to 60 days. We understand time, I understand time. I've had brown water now for almost the past five years. We're asking, I think, or at least I'm asking, that we push this time for another six months to the fall, possibly winter town meeting. Because I think that, if you're saying that this would be the exact same article presented, I think it does give the estate time where we're not gonna end up in litigation that could then draw out the process further, cost the town more money in legal fees to, you know, finish the taking by eminent domain. And I also think it sets a very dangerous precedent. This is, this, I believe, in all of my years of attending town meeting, there's been one article that's had to do with eminent domain. I think that this sets a dangerous precedent that the town does have this authority to enact eminent domain if necessary, and I, I can see and I can hear, I'm sorry, that's my alarm going off. Mr. Moderator is telling me it's time. So, I'll go ahead and wrap it up with saying, I'd encourage you to please push this off to the fall town meeting again.
Thank you. After this, just new information, so, yes, ma'am?
My name is Mary O'Donnell, I live on 24 Pondview Drive. I'm very well aware of eminent domain, I've lost land by it. However, this is landlocked land, we need it for water. I mean, what are we talking about? We just, I'd like to, first of all, move the question, but we need it, and we're gonna get it eventually, why wouldn't we do it? What's, and it's landlocked, you don't get sued over landlocked most times, and what are they gonna sue us?
They sue for anything.
Say it again? If, if you pay a fair price, you're not gonna get sued. So, I can see a big deal, I'd love to move the question.
Thank you. Sir, just new information, do you have anything new?
No, I'm actually a water commissioner, I was gonna speak towards the issue, but I don't know if it's appropriate for you to hear, I just got here just now, sorry. But if...
So you don't know it's already been addressed?
No, so I might just sit down and listen.
I mean, if you want a minute, I'll give you, but it's, it's been going on for about 20 minutes, 20...
Can I respond to one thing in this comment? It's...
We're not taking shots here. Seeing no further debate, I'm gonna take it to a vote. All those in favor of taking this property through eminent domain, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Counters? Can you take out your cards, please? It's a two-thirds vote, I have to count it. So, guys, can we just be quiet for one second? All those in favor, can you take out your purple cards, raise them up? That's all, all in favor of taking the property through eminent domain, raise your hands, please. You got the table, right? What do you got? Yes, sir. Anyone opposed, can you take out your cars, cards? Yes, sir. Twenty. It's a two-thirds. The article does, fails, the numbers were 75 in favor, 45 opposed, it was a two-thirds vote. Forty-five opposed, 75 in favor. Moving on to article number 11.
Just read the first motion, get a second, move that one, unless you wanna combine...
Yeah, I'm gonna divide it, go ahead. So you're gonna do one through eight? No, go to P... The first motion.
Just the first motion.
The other two are gonna move all together.
Yeah, yeah, just the first.
The first motion, and then go through items one through eight.
See right here? I don't know, because I print it out differently.
Yeah, so...
Just the one that... Can you read that one? Sorry.
Motion number...
Page 21. Just the motion...
Motion number one, and then read one through eight.
Yeah, so I don't have to go by each line?
We will eventually, but just start with the motion.
Good morning. David Kennedy, 13 Copper Beach Drive, Chair of the Capital Plan Committee. Motion's for Article 11. Motion one, move the town, appropriate the sum of $644,623.52 for the capital expenditure items one through eight as printed in the warrant to meet this appropriation, the sum of $611,538 be transferred from free cash, the sum of $33,265.52 be transferred from prior year's special, special articles identified in the warrant, sent, said expenditures to, under the direction of the departments named.
Second. So, right now, we're gonna talk projects one through eight. Go ahead, sir.
Okay.
And that'll be a majority vote, and the other, the remaining projects, nine through 14 are a two-thirds vote, so we're kind of splitting it. So, one through eight, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, the first section, project one is $96,000 for refurbished brush truck for the fire department. As you can see in the recommendation, all three boards voted unanimous. The second one is $65,000 to repair Station Two siding and trim. Even though all boards were in favor, there were some members that, that voted against it. The third item is for the police, for, for the police, and this is for, to replace two cars, $130,746. The next one is to replace the pickup truck for the police station as well, 55130. And before I go any further, if anybody wants... And before I go any further, if anybody wants to put a hold on any of these, please do so, and we'll come back and discuss.
Yeah, just, I'll take care of that after you just read them.
Okay. And so the next one is $100,000 for the engineering and design for a construction of a public safety complex for both for both police and fire. The next item is for $62,000 to replace a 2008 Ford F-350 four-wheel drive and plow for Streets, Streets and Parks. The next one is $94,000 to replace a 2005 Ejection Trailer for solid waste. And the last one is for $41,747.52 to replace an intercom and clock at Kingston Elementary School. And again, a majority of the recommend, all of the recommendations are in favor.
So I'll open that one through eight up to debate. Yes, sir?
Jim Conley, 243 Main Street, I'd like to speak to project number five, $100,000 design and engineering for the public safety complex. Is, it's my understanding, this would be the first step to constructing somewhere in the range of a $15 million public safety complex. Is that correct?
That is correct, it's more for a new police station that would be situated by the Fire Station on Route 27.
Do we have property to site that new police station?
There there is enough land there. But we are in the process and.
Town Administrator, please, can you please discuss that, please?
If I could, the, as I think everybody's aware, there's a need for a new police station in town. There's been a couple of sites that the police station has been proposed on in the past that have failed. There's also a need to extend or expand the Fire Department by an additional bay with some other improvements done to the Fire Department that was proposed in the original plan that was approved. A number of years ago, 20 or so years ago, for the Pembroke Street Fire Station, there was a reduction in funding for that Fire Station that which, in which the bay was removed. The Fire Department is in need of adding that bay in the future. The $100,000 that we're seeking this evening, or this morning, I guess, at this point, is would allow for us to finalize a design from from the previously designed police station on the Pembroke Street land that abuts the Fire Station. The, there would be a need to acquire a small portion of land from EverSource. We've had conversations with EverSource about that at this point. We have not received any sort of decision from EverSource at this particular point, but we are seeking a small piece of the property that abuts the Fire Station land on Pembroke Street to build the Police Department on the Pembroke Street site. Does that answer your question?
No, no, respectfully, don't.
Okay.
The the question is, do we currently have or own sufficient amount of land to?
No. Nope, no, that's why we're having conversations with EverSource, sir.
So, at least in my way of thinking, this $100,000 is premature with respect to building a new station. I understand it's, I'm not talking about the merits of the station, I happen to live across the street from the current station. I'm just wondering why, at this point, we would allocate $100,000, which presumably would be spent to design, to engineer in a design, or engage in a design process for a building that we just don't know where to locate at this point? Is that a correct assessment?
So if I if I could, Mr. Moderator, money wouldn't be spent unless we had a a site identified. So in this case, if EverSource isn't willing to provide land to allow a police station on Pembroke Street, the $100,000 wouldn't be spent on anything to do with Pembroke Street. What what would occur is there'd be some modifications to the Police Department building, and I assume, and the person behind you is the Chairman of the Police Department Building Committee, and she can probably get into it more than I, but I think we would identify then what our our top priority for a spot would be, to locate the Police Department building, and then finalize the designs for a police station that would come forward for a vote of consideration of an unknown amount at some point in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
We did return money to, in a prior town meeting in spring of 2020, for a police station design because we weren't sure at the time when we would be pursuing that, so we returned money back. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, ma'am.
I am not the chairman, I am her sister, I'm sorry, we get confused all the time. My name is Dorothy McFarlane, I live on 17 Wapping Road. Regardless of whether we can use that land eventually, or some other land, we've come up, this subject has come up several times, the present Police Department building is totally inadequate, totally inadequate for what we need. It has to be replaced. If we can at least put the money in for a plan, then when we get the land, or get some other land, then we'll be ready to build the done thing. It has to be replaced. The town is getting bigger, it's getting older, it was built as a bank instead of a police department. If you talk to a policeman or the chief, ask them what's wrong with this place and why do we need a new one? I say, please vote yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Elaine Fury, 60 Cold Street, I just have a question. Article 20 is purchasing land for the Fire Station, so this EverSource land, we the land that's being purchased for the Fire Station is independent of this based on the way the article is worded. So for this particular design of the complex, there is, I have to agree, there is there is no land, and this is basically, the design isn't gonna start till we get land, correct? Or is a design gonna start with the expectation that the land is gonna be there? Or is it just holding it?
Keith, can you address that?
Sure, so the the two articles are independent of each other. The the Fire Station land that you'll be considering a little bit later on today is behind the Fire Station. If you're looking from Pembroke Street, the land that we would be needing from EverSource, if you're, again, looking at the Fire Station from Pembroke Street, is on the left-hand side of of the Fire Department building. Did I get everything, Elaine?
Well, actually, I wanted to know if the design, are you gonna start a design without knowing the land is that you own the land? So this is a placeholder.
It is, I mean, so ultimately, we have a, we have a couple of designs, from what I understand, of a Police Department, a single-story building and a and a two-story building. We would, we would dust off that single-story building design if we were fortunate enough to be able to obtain the EverSource property and make any potential modifications that need to be identified and modified through changes in in requirements for the Police Departments, but there's not gonna be any money spent at this particular time until we've identified specifically where that Police Department's gonna be landing, yes.
Okay, it just looks like the copper, the house before, the copper for the house. I mean, we don't have the land, but we're setting aside money. Okay, thank you.
We we have land, we don't have the EverSource land, but we certainly have other locations we can place it. Where we own the land now. We just wouldn't be the first choice.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street, sorry, Mr. Moderator, I got distracted when you first introduced the article. Can I speak to the vehicle acquisitions?
What number is that? The police vehicles?
The, there's a, there's a bunch of vehicle acquisitions for the Highway Department and the Police Department.
Yeah, is it number, is it number three to replace the two SUVs?
Number three, number six, and number four, right.
Three, four, and six.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Kingston is a green community, can we assure us townpeople that all want electric vehicles, that when we buy electric, when we buy equipment like this, that we get the most efficient and potentially electric vehicles for our town departments? I am, you know, on the front line there of climate change, with sea level rising, it's a real thing. Any any emissions we blow into the atmosphere matter. The Highway Department, the Police Department in particular, do not know how to turn off their vehicles. If they were electric, it wouldn't matter so much. So can we have a pledge from the town, Select Board, Highway Department, Police Department, Capital Planning, all you guys, that we go electric, please?
Pine, just to let you know, the two cars that we are replacing this year are going to a hybrid model, so it's not, it's not gonna be a full reg, regular SUVs. I'm not sure if the Police Chief is here, but he talked about moving forward that that the hybrid model would be the way to go. So I'm not sure if we're gonna go all the way to electric, but I know we're gonna try.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, a town planner again, 1 Schofield Road, Valerie Massard. I think that as a green community, we're required to look to buy the green vehicles as much as they're available. And I know that there's new fleets that have just been made available in the last year or two that we can look to, but we also have to remember that some of these vehicles aren't constructed yet and aren't available in the marketplace yet as green vehicles, but just so everybody understands that.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further people approaching or standing at the microphone. So we we're moving one through eight because that's a majority vote. And the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning unanimously approved all of them except for number two, which the Finance Committee had a 3-2 vote and Capital Planning had a 3-1 vote. Again, we're moving projects one through eight. All those in favor of approving projects one through eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Now, part two is gonna be, I'll let the, read it, but it's gonna be nine through 14, that's gonna be a two-thirds vote. Go ahead, sir.
No, it's not.
Nine through 14.
No, motion two is two-thirds vote for the moving of the money.
Yep, yep, combine them.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna vote on motion two and motion three together, so. Motion two, stand, move the town to authorize.
Can you just speak up a little, I'll get closer to the microphone, please?
Move the town to authorize, under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, to purchase finance agreements for the acquisition of equipment for replacement of Engine One, the 1995 Mack Truck, and the 2002 Sterling Dump Truck as printed in the warrant. They may be acquired through assistance issuance of debt under GLC 44. The term of such agreement not to exceed the useful life of the equipment as determined by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the department specified below to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town, subject to approval of the appropriation for the first-year payment of the agreements as printed in the next motion.
Did you do the second part?
So say, and further?
Okay. And further for motion three, move the town, appropriate the sum of $514,974 for the capital expenditures for lease purchases as printed in the warrant, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $514,974 be transferred from the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund. Said expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named.
Yes, sir.
Jim Conley, 243 Main Street, I I just have a question, this seems like the place to do it, and you correct me if I'm wrong. As I look through this, I don't see a lot of capital expenditure around street and sidewalk improvement. And perhaps there's somewhere else in the warrant that is gonna come up later. But can, at least for my own edification, get a sense from either the Finance Committee or the Capital Budget Committee, what the allocation towards street and sidewalk improvement will be for the, throughout the fiscal year?
Can anyone address that?
Paul Bazler, Lieutenant, Chevron Drive, I am your Highway Superintendent. In the budget we just passed, not too many articles go. I do believe there's $6,000 in the Highway Budget for sidewalk improvements, and I do believe there's $75,000 in the Highway Budget for street improvements. Thank you.
As it relates to Articles 12, 13, and 14, does anyone from the Fire Department or Streets and Parks want to be heard?
Hi, Susan Sherman, I I don't understand how this town can exist on $6,000 on sidewalk and $75,000 on roads.
Ma'am, that's not, ma'am, that's not part of this article.
Good morning, everybody, not to, to expand. To expand a little bit on what Mr. Bazler was saying. In addition to the Highway Department budget that we just approved a few moments ago, there is a line, a specific line item in there for sidewalk paving, but there is also an additional line item in there for general road repairs, I believe we call it construction, Paul. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure on the the title of the account. It had had an appropriation for many years of about $75,000. There was one recommendation that occurred this year that both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen supported, and ultimately, Town Meeting just supported, is there was a proposal to increase our snow and ice budget by $100,000. We recommended not increasing the snow and ice budget and moving that $100,000 appropriation into the Highway Department budget for FY '23 in order to allocate additional funding to roadways or sidewalk improvements. And then in addition to the annual appropriation, I think it was in our consent agenda, we also approved and adopted Chapter 90 funding, which is used for general roadway improvements. And roadways can include sidewalk improvements as well. So the town does, is not allocating just $6,000 a year to roadways and sidewalks. We're actually allocating much more than that through a couple of different mechanisms. Does that answer your question? Yeah, Susan, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard as it relates to projects nine through 14 as printed in the article warrant? Seeing none, it's a two-thirds vote. They were all unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Capital Plan Committee. All those, whoop, hold on, just a walk of eye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye, or nay? All those opposed? Anybody? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Article 12?
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $12,000 from unexpected, unexpended articles as printed in the warrant for upgrade assistance for the town's financial software system, MUNIS. The current version of the town's financial management system requires an upgrade in order for it to continue to be supported. The upgrade itself is at no cost, but due to the complex nature of the software, it is recommended by the town's Finance Director that $12,000 be available to fund technical assistance for the upgrade. The source of this funding will come from unexpended prior articles as listed in the Town Meeting warrant.
Would anyone like to be heard? This is a Board of Selectmen, favorable 5-0, Finance Committee, favorable 5-0.
Move the town set the salaries for elected officials as of July first twenty, this motion doesn't actually look right. All right, let me, let me do it on the fly here. Move that the town set the salaries for elected officials as of July first twenty-twenty-two as printed in the warrant, and further, the sum of nine thousand ninety-six dollars be raised and appropriated for said salaries, and that the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budgets.
Would you like to address it?
Do you want me to? This article will set the salaries for our elected officials as listed in the, the chart above, including the moderator, Board of Selectmen, and the various boards and commissions. It also sets the salaries for our three elected officials that are members of our financial management team and administration, including the collector, the treasurer, and the town clerk. The stipends for the elected officials listed in your first chart are level funded from last year. The wage adjustment that is being proposed for the collector, treasurer, and town clerk represents a four percent increase, and that's why that additional appropriation of nine thousand dollars is included here.
Would anyone like to be heard?
Lorraine Bergio, forty-two Winthrop Street.
Good morning.
Good morning. I understand you've just granted a four percent increase to the collector, treasurer, and town clerk, which is twice that awarded to the contracts and wage of personnel. Could you explain why they got a double dose?
Sure. Mr. Moderator, is that okay?
Yeah, please.
Okay, fantastic. So these elected officials are the three employees in our community that have literally no guidelines or framework regarding their compensation. Every other employee either has some sort of a collective bargaining agreement or an independent employment contract, and every year, I think we have this conversation about how we as a community struggle to set their compensation because ultimately, the recommendation is left to the Finance Committee. We have asked for assistance through the HR department and, and other methods to set a framework in order to provide professional guidance for these three positions. And unfortunately, that has not happened. We have been assured year over year that it would happen, and it has not. So, as a Finance Committee, we took a look at a couple of things. We took a look at the fact that other employees who are on collective bargaining agreements, and that includes wage and personnel, there are salary schedules that they are on that include grade and step increases annually. These three elected positions do not get any kind of a grade or step increase annually like other employees do. In addition, we also looked at compensation across all of our department heads in our own community. These are department heads who manage staff, who are called upon for their professional input in a number of matters. And when you look at the list of department heads and the compensation across those department heads, you will see that these three positions are at the bottom of the list every year. We run the risk, and I know there's an argument that people like to make that these are elected positions, and you never know what you're going to get, and, and therefore, they, I guess you're arguing that we should not pay them fairly, and I would disagree with that. These positions are very important to our community, and I think that you run a risk when you do not pay these positions appropriately, that you are not attracting potentially qualified candidates to run for these positions. There may be people out here who have the credentials to do these jobs, but they're simply not running because the salary is too low. Or, if the salary is too low, then you also run the risk of bringing people in and using Kingston as a training ground for experience for them to go out and get a higher-paying paid position. The rationale behind the four percent, and honestly, you'll look and see that it was a split vote because a couple of members on the board actually wanted to have a higher increase, due in large part to the fact that these positions received no COLA during COVID when every other employee in the town did receive a COLA. So the four percent was representative of a number of different factors. It, it brings some parity, I guess, to the compensation of those positions, but for a couple of us on the board, it actually wasn't even enough. So, does that answer your question?
Somewhat. I do object that I don't think people, I, I, I never said or implied that people don't deserve to get good wages. However, in terms of step raises and COLA, not all employees get step raises, some of them are at the cap at the top, so they're only getting two percent. But we're all held to this standard of stick with two, stick with two, and to separate out three positions to get four, which is twice. It's kind of hard to explain to the people that are only getting two percent and no step, why that's happening. So thank you for the explanation.
Absolutely, but I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'd just like to remind you that back in FY twenty, when every other employee did, the, the thing with the elected officials is their salary has to be set for July one, and it cannot be taken up at a fall Town Meeting. So this is the only opportunity that we have to make an adjustment. Back during COVID, when we had our spring Town Meeting, where employees did not receive an adjustment at the spring Town Meeting, but they did later in the year, those elected officials did not. So this four percent is simply a catch-up of, if you want to think of it that way, it was the two percent that they did not get before and a two percent now, if that makes it a little bit more clear.
That's a little better.
Okay. Thanks, Lorraine.
Just, you said that's a little better, right?
She did, yes.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Yes, sir.
Paul Sardella, seventy-three Ring Road. I'd just make a suggestion, as the lady had mentioned, that it was based on the HR department not coming up with a framework for salary increases for these department heads. If that's in fact the case, I, I would suggest and recommend that we reallocate these funds from the HR department's budget to compensate these employees accordingly.
Thank you for the suggestion. Would anyone else like to be heard? This is a, let me go again. Majority vote, five-zero, support from the Board of Selectmen in a three-two vote in favor of, by the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Moving on to nineteen? Am I correct? Cold storage building, whose is that? Please.
Yep, live. Move the town appropriate the sum of four hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars to construct a four thousand square foot multi-departamental cold storage building on property owned by the town, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, sections seven, eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefore under chapter forty-four of the general laws, and further, any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with general law, chapter forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. First, let me apologize, that was a lot to try to understand. All right. At last year's special Town Meeting, the Town Meeting Body approved the sale of the former Maple Street Fire Station property. To briefly recap, there is subsurface contamination, so underground contamination on the site, and to remove the existing building and remediate the contamination, the cost was estimated at over five hundred thousand dollars. As you can see detailed in your handout today, currently the building is used for storing a number of pieces of equipment from various departments valuing somewhere between three hundred thousand and four hundred thousand dollars. This article funds the construction of a four thousand square foot building to be placed, we think, behind the highway barn or near the highway barn, so that we can move those assets out of the former fire station and sell the property. We estimate that four thousand square feet, at that size, this building will be big enough to meet the town's needs for the next ten to twenty years. With this capital item, it is part of the capital plan, but we're presenting it as a separate article because we're asking for borrowing as the funding source. If we postpone this, and in the meantime, the former fire station property is sold, the equipment stored there would have to be left outside for a winter season, since there is not sufficient storage space in any other building. Ultimately, this would likely cause us to have to replace these assets sooner than we would have if we'd been able to keep them stored indoors. Additionally, if this equipment is left outside, they would be at risk of being stolen, as we do not have an area where they could be kept safe and locked. To summarize, by approving this article, we are taking care of the town's assets.
Anyone like to be heard? Questions? You should sit closer. Yes, sir. How are you?
Well enough. Jim Conley, two forty-three Main Street. I, I guess, I don't have a question, I just, I guess I have a statement, if I may. I, I really don't understand the town's priorities, to be honest with you. I'm, I'm not talking about the merits of this project, and the next article that's going to come up deals with the acquiring of land for a fifteen million dollar police station. But as I look around, I see a lot that needs to be done, and with all due respect to the money that's going to be spent on streets and sidewalks, and with water filtration, I mean, I, I, I just don't understand the priorities. You can't, our sidewalks are collapsing, the streets are in, in disrepair, and we're not really nearly spending enough, and on the subject of capital. The wastewater treatment plant is underperforming, as, at least as, as I see it, and, you know, I, I live on Main Street. Fourteen thousand cars a day go up and down that road, bar vehicles, many of them are very big trucks. And I don't understand why we only have one crosswalk on that street. Now, for those of you who are thinking, well, that's a state road, we're not responsible for that. That's not correct. It is a state numbered road, but the, the responsibility for construction and for maintenance and for traffic enforcement on that street rests with the town of Kingston. And I, I don't see anything in here that tells us, or assures us, that the aging population, at least on my street, can get across that street safely.
Sir, you, you make some valid points, and I'm just the town moderator, this is just the Town Meeting, and it's something that should be addressed with the Board of Selectmen or other departments, but here, it's, we're going by what's been printed on the warrant and the articles, and if you want to address the Board of Selectmen as to, if they want to respond, that's fine, but-
I just was going to-
I, I've addressed them, they, as they indicate, I, I'm just making a statement based on, because we're talking about capital spending, and I, and, and the priorities for, for this building, I understand the merits, I'm just questioning the priorities. All right? And so, thank you.
Thank you.
But one of the pieces of equipment that's stored in this building is the asphalt, asphalt hot box, so I just want to point that out, that we want to, we just bought it, we'd like to take care of it, so we can work on the roads and sidewalks and things.
Sarah Alter, forty-one Landing Road.
Good morning.
Good morning. Which is just around the corner from Maple Street, and I walk by this property every day, practically every day, and this is the first I've heard of this, first I've seen this article, and I'm just wondering, why are we trying to put the cold storage building there? Is it because we own the property?
We are not going to put the cold storage building there. We were talking about putting it near the highway barn, which is behind the townhouse. So we're trying to sell, at, at last Town Meeting, special Town Meeting, Town Meeting Body approved to sell that property, but we have to, we're, right now, we're using it for storage, so we need to move everything that's in there somewhere else.
Oh, I misunderstood, I thought you were removing everything to there, and I think that property's going to be very valuable soon, and, so, the town still owns it, correct?
Currently, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Corlins House, thirty-one Howland Lane.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, I just have to echo what that gentleman said, the town literally is falling apart in front of our eyes, and everybody's acting like it's not, and just like the saying, water, water everywhere, and not a drop to drink, and it's same thing with money, money everywhere, and everybody's broke, and we literally have to go and fix the problems in Kingston and start with problem number one, and those are the obvious problems in front of us. That being said, I don't have objections to literally anything basically with regard to what we do in the town. It always just comes down to the priorities and the money being spent for those projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Going back to article nineteen, it was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five-zero, the Finance Committee, five-zero, Capital Planning was a three-to-one vote, this is a two-thirds vote. Seeing no further debate, all those in favor of construction of a cold storage building as printed in the warrant?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty?
Move the town transfer from free cash the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to acquire a parcel of land from Richard Carlson and Frederick Carlson consisting of zero point nine six acres, more or less, Lot thirty-eight, according to plan record at book nineteen, page nine nine seven, in the Plymouth County Register of Deeds at book six two three five, page one two five, provided, however, that any such purchase shall be subject to an appraisal that confirms the purchase price as being the approximate value of the property and subject to customary contingencies, including an inspection, an inspectional contingency in a duly negotiated purchase, a duly negotiated purchase and sale agreement. Any further, and further, that the Selectmen shall be authorized to execute any and all instruments necessary to issueate such purchase and accept any and all gifts to offset the purchase price.
An explanation to the price change, the original warrant article amount was the anticipated
purchase price of the property. After further negotiation with the landowners, the final purchase price of two hundred thousand dollars was tentatively agreed to pending Town Meeting approval. This article allows for the funding of a purchase of a parcel of land located next to the Pembroke Street Fire Station for future expansion of the fire station. This is part of the capital plan, but must be a separate article due to the vote requirement being different.
Would anyone like to be heard?
Peter Baird, one oh nine Summer Street. Just curious, how much property there is at the existing fire station, so what would the total lot size be once this has been added to it? Thank you.
I'm going to refer over to Town Administrator for the-
If I could, so I, I, I believe from the map I'm looking at, sir, the existing fire station lot is one point two acres. The, the lot that we're looking to acquire from the abutter is point nine six acres, so it'd be just under two point two acres.
So, just seeing no one else, the Board of Selectmen vote was five-zero, favorable. The Finance Committee revoted this, and their vote now is one, three, being not favorable. Capital Planning was favorable, four to zero. Would the Finance Committee like to address the town as to their change of vote?
You guys want to address it, or against it?
We got this request just prior to the meeting, and there's basically just been a price change on an agreed-upon price of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's why I changed my vote. I can't speak for Jerry, but again, as I said, prior to this meeting, the talk has been one seventy-five, one seventy-five, and fifteen minutes before the meeting, we're given this paperwork to say that it's now two hundred thousand, so I'm opposed to it for that reason.
Thank you. Would someone from the Board of Selectmen like to address the price increase?
I can speak to that, the, if you want, unless you want to.
You can, if you'd like to.
The, when the appraisal was taking place, there was some discussion that I wasn't aware of at the time. a price change on an agreed-upon price of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's why I changed my vote. I can't speak for Jerry, but again, as I said, prior to this meeting, the talk has been one-seventy-five, one-seventy-five, and fifteen minutes before the meeting, we're given this paperwork to say that it's now two hundred thousand. So, I'm opposed to it for that reason.
Thank you. Would someone from the Board of Selectmen like to address the price increase?
I can speak to that, if you want, unless you want to.
You can, if you'd like to.
The, when the appraisal was taking place, there was some discussion that I wasn't aware of at the time. The appraiser said they thought the property would probably be around two hundred thousand, and they said that to the person who owns the land, so...
Now they want two hundred thousand?
Right.
Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing nobody, this, like I said, it was favorable, Board of Selectmen, five-zero, and Finance Committee is now a one-three vote, and Capital Planning's four-zero, two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the purchase of land, say aye?
Aye.
It's loud over there. All those opposed? Can, I'm going to do that one more time. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye? I say nay?
Nay.
I'm going to count it. Can you take out your purple cards? All in favor of the purchase of the land, please raise a purple card. There, he got you. Yes, sir? What do you got? Two-nine. Mr. Ruda? Twenty-two. If you're opposed to the purchase of land, can you take out your card and raise it, please? Scrumstrun? Eight? The nay's allowed. Purchase of land, Article twenty, carries. By two-thirds. The numbers were ninety-five in favor, and twenty-one opposed. Moving on to Article twenty-one, Sampson Fund.
Carl Pike, Treasurer. Move the town accept the recommendations of the trustees of the Elizabeth B. Sampson Memorial Fund to appropriate a sum of thirty-three thousand from the income of said fund to be expended for the purposes the trustees recommend. This is the annual article which we recommend the certain projects for the income from the Sampson Fund be spent. They're generally projects that will benefit the town. This year, it's the Kingston Library, purchase of display cases for five thousand dollars. The Police Department for the National Night Out, including some new equipment, for ten thousand dollars. The Recreation Commission for the Grays Beach Community Entertainment, five thousand dollars. The Veterans Memorial Park for park design and renderings for five thousand. The Memorial Day Committee for the parade for five thousand. The Fire Department for the holiday luminaries for three thousand, for the total of thirty-three thousand.
Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing no one, it's a majority vote favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee unanimously. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now the fun one. Article twenty-two. So this article, I'm going to kind of do one by one. We'll present the article, and then, anyone that you want to debate, we'll pull that out, and then we'll vote them. If it doesn't want to be debated, then we'll vote those that don't want to be debated, and the ones that are debated will all be voted separately. Does everyone understand? Any questions? The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Shropshire, nine Green Street. I am the Chair of the CPC Committee. Before we started, if I may, just a quick update about, yep, CPC itself. So, I just thought we could just briefly describe the Community Preservation Act, and where the funds for these projects that we're about to propose come from, just so, I think this will help with any discussion or debate that we're going to have here today. So just a quick overview, the CPA, which is the Community Preservation Act, was a, it's a smart growth tool that was established by the state in two thousand. Any community within the state of Massachusetts can apply to be a CPA member. Kingston was elected, or I said, was made a member in two thousand and five, so we've been a member for actually quite a while. What the, what being a member does, it allows you to have access to funds that the state raises through, anytime there's a transaction at the registry, there's a twenty-five or fifty-dollar surplus that's added to those transactions, and that money goes back to the state. The state then gives that money to the towns that are part of the CPA. So, out of the three hundred and some communities in the state, there's about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty or so now, that are actually CPA members, including Kingston. Since we were originally, you know, we originally signed up to be a CPA member, we have actually appropriated about six point seven million dollars to local community projects, which has been great. We did, just so you know, where the money, then also, there's a matching fund that comes from the town. There's a one percent surcharge that is applied to your property tax, so it's not actually increasing your taxes, it's a surplus on top of your taxes, one percent that goes towards this fund as well. So the combination of the state money, and then our surplus money, goes into a fund that is eligible for the projects that we're about to propose. So a lot of good, like I said, over the years have come out of this, and a lot of those projects, again, you know, people are well familiar with. Just mention that where the money has to be spent, so, once the money is into those funds, there's only three purposes for the spending, the funding where it can go. There's open space, which can be funded for recreation, and, again, open space projects. There's historical, which goes towards historical preservation, and then there's community housing. And that's the only places this money can go. It's earmarked for those purposes, and the money can only be spent there. The purpose of the CPC is to listen to proposals and solicit proposals every year. Once those proposals are looked at, we look for, make sure they're eligible for the funding. If they're eligible for the funding, we have a vote and recommend them to town meeting for you to approve. So, again, the funding for these projects can only be spent on CPA projects. We cannot spend these on any of the capital projects. We can't spend them on schools, fire trucks, police cars, any of that, right? They have to be for the purposes of the CPA. So it is not, it's town money, because it's, you know, it's a town account, but it is managed by CPC. So this year, we have, it was great, we had six projects that we're bringing forward for presentation. We'll be going through those today, so there's actually seven motions, including the administrative account, which we'll be going through. And just a very quick update here on the finances, so everybody understands how much money is in the accounts, and then how much would be left over if all of these different projects were approved. So right now, we have about one point four million, well, actually even more than that, we have about one point six-seven million dollars that is in our account for expenditures. We have about three hundred and forty-two thousand right now that's already allocated to projects that we've approved previously, that the money just still hasn't been spent. There's thirty-seven thousand dollars in our open space account. There is a hundred and nine thousand dollars in the historic account, and there's about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in the community housing account. There's also an undesignated fund that is one point four million dollars, that has funding in there that could be allocated to any one of those other three projects. We have right now about five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of outstanding expenditures, so the total available funding is just a little over one point one million dollars. With the projects that you'll hear presented here today, it's a total of about seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So there is a surplus of around three, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars right now of funding that is available, even after all these projects are approved. There's a reserve that has to be put in place of about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for FY twenty-three, so next fiscal year, which starts in July. There's a requirement that ten percent of any funds received in a year must go into each one of the three buckets that we talked about, open space, historic, and the housing. Thank you. So, so really, there's about two hundred thousand dollars right now that is left over that will roll into next year. Also in addition, you may recall, on the Fall Town Meeting, we approved the purchase of the Windstrip Street land property. That was an eight hundred and five thousand dollar acquisition, of which four hundred thousand dollars we're going to be getting back as part of a land grant from the state, and that should be awarded sometime at the beginning of the next year, again, sometime July, hopefully in August. So we will be getting that money back as well. And then we also have the revenues that will be coming in for FY twenty-three, which are expected to be somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars. So, total, there's about eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars left that we should be getting in as revenue for next year, and that's on top of the two hundred or so that we have now, or actually, three hundred when the reserves go away. So, all told, if you look at the balance, that leaves us about one point two million dollars for next year's projects. So it's quite a bit, and a lot of that is thanks to the land grant that the Windstrip Street property applied for. So, there is also, I should mention, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in outstanding projects where we think the funding is not being currently utilized, we're asking for that back. As part of the CPC process, and again, I think this is pertinent to the discussion today, you have one year to spend the funds if you, your project is approved. If you do not spend those funds, they are to be returned back to the CPC, back into the bucket from which they came. So if it was an open space project that didn't happen, the money has to go back into open space. And then, so, we have, like I said, about a hundred and six thousand of unspent funds that we're going to be getting back, hopefully there, too. Okay. So with that said, I just thought we'd set the stage there for how this works. The first motion, if I may?
Well, the first one's going to be the budget, and then we're going to do each project, one through six, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
You're good? Okay. So, the first motion here is for the budget for CPC. So move that the town approve the report and the Community Preservation Committee on the FY twenty-three Community Preservation Budget, and to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, a sum of nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars, to meet the administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for FY twenty-three. And further, to reserve for future appropriation, a sum of one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and one dollars from the Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenues for open space, historic, resources, and community housing purposes. So, just a quick, on this one, this is, there's really no debate, this is the budget that has to get approved every year, as I mentioned previously. This is a requirement from state law, so there's really no major discussion. This is just giving you the estimated revenues that we had set aside for this, for this year.
So we're going to, well, we'll open it to debate, but we're just going to vote on the budget first, and then we'll go through each project one by one and have another vote as the projects are addressed, so, yes?
Jean Coleman, twenty Howland Lane. This is actually regarding the budget. I have a motion to amend this article to accept the fifty thousand dollar grant from the state, House Bill number forty-seven hundred, to be applied to the restoration of the B-two ball field.
So, that's allocation of monies, so...
Just going to clear, I'm just going to clarify, the fifty thousand dollar grant you're referring to is not being applied to any of the other subsequent projects, correct?
I think it will be. It's been discussed as being a fundraised source for the ball, for the playground, later in this article.
For the playground, which is with motion number six?
Seven, I believe.
Seven? So why don't you wait and move it once you get to motion number seven?
Okay.
Because it's also my understanding that the ball field is not one of the projects, so that would be, on, subsequent projects coming up in the subsequent motions, right? So, it would be more appropriate to move it at motion number seven?
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
So, just in terms of the budget, it's a majority vote, it was approved by the Board of Selectmen, five-zero, Finance Committee, five-zero, and Community Preservation Committee, five-zero. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So now we'll go through each project, starting with, we'll call it, I guess, project number one.
Yep. Okay, so this is motion two for Article twenty-two. Move the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act historical preservation funds, a sum of money for fifteen thousand dollars, as presented to the town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to fund the restoration of Revolutionary War veterans' graves in the old burial ground? Thank you. So, just quickly, and Craig unfortunately is not here to speak to this, is the Chairman of the Historic Committee, but we have a number of grave sites within the town cemetery that are from Revolutionary period. Many of those are in really disrepair, so this funding would go towards maintaining and restoring some of those graves. There's about fifty graves or tombstones in the burial, in the cemetery. Some of those played historical roles in the Revolution. And so, the money, again, would be spent on a professional grave restoration, so hiring a company that this is what they do, and having those graves updated. Also should mention that the Historic Commission applied for a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the state, based on the fact that CPA was going to be funding, possibly, I'd say, funding this particular project, and they were awarded that grant. So there's actually thirty thousand dollars that'll go to this project if this passes here, and would be there to fix the first twenty graves, and if there's enough funding, they will continue the next thirty.
Would anyone like to address this one project? Seeing nobody, it's favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five-zero, Finance Committee, five-zero, and Community Preservation, six-zero. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Project one carries unanimously.
Motion three.
Let's move on to project number two.
Sir? So this is motion three for Article twenty-two. Move the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act historic preservation funds, a sum of money of twenty-eight hundred dollars, as presented to the town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to fund a new sale for the Bakleju. So, just a quick update, and if there's discussion, I'll have someone from the Bakleju come up and speak to this, but the Bakleju is a sailboat that is, it's from, Jean, what period? Early twenties, but it's a town-owned, sorry, not town-owned, it's a, maybe you should just present this, you want to talk about it? Yeah, I'm going to defer to Jean, since she's here to represent the project.
Good morning. Jean Landis-Norman, Vice President of the Jones River Village Historic Society. Private, previously at town meeting, there was CPC money allocated towards the restoration of this boat. It was donated to us by, to, by the International Yacht Restoration School of Newport, Rhode Island. And we came before you because George Shiverick was a well-known boat designer and manufacturer who operated here on the Jones River. There's very little left of his papers, but we are also in possession of many of his half-hauls. I don't know if you know what those are, but it's a wooden replica of what the hull of the various boats look like. When we restored this boat, because of the cost, the total cost of the boat, the eighty thousand did not near cover everything. We raised an additional thirty-five thousand dollars to complete that. In order to keep our costs as low as we could, we bought a second-hand sail. That sail has been used over the last few years to participate in the Kingston Regattas, as well as the Plymouth four-hundredth Regatta last September. I've been advised by our Bakleju Committee that that sail is no longer usable. We did get an estimate from a local sailmaker, and that is what we're basing our request of twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred dollars on.
Would anyone like to be heard on the purchase of a sail? This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five-zero, Finance Committee, three to two, and Community Preservation, six-zero. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minimal opposition. Motion, project carries. Motion, project carries. Moving on to number three.
Thanks, Jean. Put you on the spot there. All right, this is motion four for Article 22. Move the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act open space funds, a sum of money for $8,138, as presented at town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to fund kiosk and signage for select conservation properties. So this property would allow the Conservation Commission to be able to enhance and improve the signage at different parks and open space around town. There's about 15 different sites that the town owns that are mostly parks and trails. There are some signs and kiosks in those locations now, but many are in disrepair and some are unmarked completely. So this sign would really help with improving access and information at those locations to be, allow people to use that property more appropriately.
Would anyone like to be heard? This was favorable Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, five zero, and Community Preservation, six to zero. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously for project.
All right, the next motion is five for Article 22. Move the town appropriate from the available Community Preservation Act undesignated fund balance funds, a sum of money of $2,500, as presented to the town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to fund the construction of a gaga pit at Grays Beach. So you're probably wondering...
Can you tell me what a gaga pit is?
Yes, I understand. Many of you are probably wondering what a gaga pit is. So this is actually a project that was brought forth by an Eagle Scout in town. This would be an Eagle Scout project for this gentleman, which would be, again, the construction of what's known as a gaga pit. A gaga pit is a, it's a sports court that is made from small, about three-foot-high wooden barriers that form a circle about 20 feet in diameter. And the object of the game, you have a round rubber ball, like sort of a dodgeball, the object of the game is to roll the ball within the ring, and people get hit in the feet out, they're out. And so it's a game of sort of elimination. But it's a very, from my understanding, is a very, it's not like dodgeball, where the big kids all win, right? It's a very fair game in the sense that anybody with sort of any skill level plays. It's very popular, especially in the scouting ranks. And so the concept was is to put the gaga pit down at Grays Beach between the volleyball, or sorry, the basketball court and the tennis court. We have a location for it there. It's not necessarily a permanent structure in that it's just a kit, a wooden kit, but the idea would be is that it would stay there year-round. It would be maintained by, or it's built by the Boy Scouts, and it would be maintained by them, and so it's sort of a win-win from that standpoint.
Would any, sir?
Coleman, Howland, 31 Howland Lane. So with regard to being a Boy Scout project, again, my personal opinion is that the Boy Scouts, they're known to be independent, living in the woods and everything, and I believe they're more than capable of raising the money on their own. There's so many different manners in which you can raise money, and a significant amount of money, especially being the Boy Scouts, because people reward hard work and great ideas and achievement with payments of money. So I think the Boy Scouts would have no issue at all with raising the $2,500. Again, they're very smart guys, and they're independent people as well, and one thing I've learned throughout the years is the most successful people aren't dependent on anybody, especially government officials and government. So I think they do a great job raising the money themselves, and they'd feel way better about themselves as well, because they saw that they raised the money themselves, and they construct themselves, and they can say, I raised it, and I built it, and it's for everybody to use, and I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I might just speak to that for just a minute. I appreciate that point of view. So it is true that, as you mentioned, there's a fundraising needed for this, but also let you know that this is not the only expense from my discussions with the Boy Scout in our town Recreation Committee meetings. There are additional expenses beyond the $2,500 which were being requested here. Those are actually being covered by the Boy Scouts through other fundraising efforts. Also, it's not required that they do fundraising for their Eagle project, however, you have to look at it that I believe that this is a method of fundraising, right? Where they went to and came to our committee at the Recreation Department to request the funding, and then went through the entire CPC process. So as far as the effort that was put in by the Boy Scout, it was pretty tremendous, to be honest. It was a 20-page presentation, very well laid out, so I would say that as far as, you know, the aim or objective of teaching somebody at that age of how to go through a process, even though, yes, it is, I'd say pseudo-government funds, it's really, it's really state funds for these purposes. I actually think that that particular gentleman learned a tremendous amount by going through the process. So from that standpoint, I think it met the criteria, and that's, you know, I guess that's it on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Megan Hickey, 42 Winthrop Street. My only concern is that this is going to be at Grays Beach, and most Eagle Scout projects are a community project to benefit the entire community. Not everybody can access Grays Beach. Not many 18-year-olds, 17, 16, however, have a dump sticker on their car, will pay for a beach sticker on their car. So my only concern is that this won't be accessible for everybody in the community.
So, yeah, the limited parking at Grays Beach is always a bit of an issue for all the activities that are there. It would be obviously no different from the basketball or tennis courts or any of the other amenities that are at Grays Beach, but, you know, of course, it being, not having the dump sticker or the beach sticker does not stop anyone from coming, it just stops from bringing their car to Grays Beach. But understood that that does limit people to be able to drive down there and be able to access some of those sites. But as I mentioned, it's no different than any of the other amenities there. So this would, it's true, this would be, you know, another one of those amenities, but like I said, I see this as no different.
Yes, ma'am.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland Lane. I just want to second all of your comments there about how this is an approved method of fundraising. The Boy Scouts, when they do present these projects to the committees for approval, they have to also have an approved source of fundraising, and this project does qualify for using state funds for, to fundraise and to fund the project. So I know that my kids would love a gaga pit at Grays Beach. Respectfully, Andy probably more than the playground, but I think that this is a great project, and I would be fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, no one else wants to be heard anyway, so we'll just take a vote. Don't it? All those in favor of a gaga pit? Well, first off, Board of Selectmen was three to two in favor of it. Finance Committee was split two to one, and the Community Preservation was unanimous six zero. All those in favor of funding the gaga pit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition for project. Should we do the next one?
We do have the amendment, too. So do you want me to read that as part of?
Yes.
Well, is he amending? Are you amending?
There's something, because it's a grant, he's saying that. It's not necessarily what the, it's not part of the motion.
Part of your main motion, you present it.
So I'll just present it after, I'll put the motion forth and then the amendment.
Make the updated motion.
Yeah. Oh, just do it, okay, that's fine. Okay. So we have an amended motion here for motion five. So I'll actually read the amended motion and then explain why it was amended from what's in your printout here. So this is motion five, Article 22. Move that the town will appropriate a sum of $26,598.22 from available Community Preservation Act open space funds and $536,561.78 from available Community Preservation Act undesignated fund balance as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to fund the rebuild of the community playground at Grays Beach Park, which was dedicated for recreation purposes under Master and Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, at the June 5, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen, the Recreation Commission, and any other applicable Kingston officials to apply for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as may be administered under the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Park Grant Program, or other applicable programs, and to authorize the town acting by and through to enter any necessary contract thereto deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and/or any other gift or grant programs in any way connected with the scope of this article. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, correct.
Thank you. Friendly amendment.
Yep. So let me just discuss why there was the amendment first, then we'll talk about the actual motion itself. The reason for the amended motion was to allow the Recreation Commission the ability to apply for a reimbursable grant from the state that could be as much as $100,000 for the purpose of paying for part of the playground expense. Without the change in language in the article and the warrant, that funding wouldn't actually be allowed to be accessed. So we had to make a modification for that purpose. So that's why there was an amendment. I will just briefly touch on the subject, and we have Sue Wigworth here, who's the Director of the Recreation Commission, to further explain the project. But this money would go towards the restoration and replacement, actually not restoration, but the replacement of the playground that is currently at Grays Beach. We, the Recreation Commission commissioned a inspection, which is needed annually, and as part of that annual inspection, it was found that the playground was nearing a point where it was no longer restorable. So there were several recommendations within that report, but the overall bottom line was that the playground does need to be replaced. It does not need to be replaced immediately in the sense that there was nothing that makes us shut it down today, but it's very clear within a very short period of time that that would be the case in certain areas in particular. We have already, at the Recreation Commission, had to take different pieces of equipment off of the structure and have had to actually shut down parts of it already because of degradation. It is 18 years old at this point, and most playgrounds last about 20 years, so we're just about at the end of the useful life of the playground. So that's what the motion is. Sue, do you want to come up and say anything else? I'll give the floor to Sue to explain more.
Before we discuss the merits of the article itself, can we get through the motion, which is a motion to amend on the table? Can I speak to that, please?
Just move it again for clarity.
It's actually, well, now it's a little bit more complicated, because his motion to amend is essentially saying that this article could accept a state grant without having to come back to the town body. Is that correct?
That particular...
For a point of clarification?
He moved as part of his main motion, so it's not a motion to amend at this point. It's the main motion.
It hasn't included the language about a grant, but it's specific to that.
Right, but he amended the original article to say that the project, this specific project can accept grants without having to come back to the town body for approval of those grants. Is that correct?
Let me reread it. Yes, it will authorize them to apply for additional grants with the state, including the park grant program.
Right, and if I may, my, I'm against that, because as I just mentioned in my earlier, I think I'm like kind of messing up this order here, because this project that I'm speaking about is not currently on the table, but it should have been, and this specific grant, one of which that has been discussed considerably in the last couple of weeks on Facebook and other town pages and stuff, it speaks about this specific House Bill, 4700, which is for $50,000, and it specifically says on there, "for playgrounds and fields." So since we had a project come off of the CPC-funded list due to the cost of this playground, I would like that $50,000 grant to be specifically held for the field. And by accepting this amendment to the original article, it's, it's no longer, I think, it's no longer reserving those funds, if you will. So I think that that would be, I would ask him to put the original motion back on the table and remove that amendment.
And Ms. Coleman, also, if you come up here, I can change your motion to amend that I know that you have. I've seen it.
Yep.
And I think it would address your issue in a different way. So if you give me just two minutes and you can come up?
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yep.
No, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. I got that. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight. I'm going to skip it. I think she's straight.
Yep, understand.
Thank you.
Ready? Okay. So just to be clear, with that amendment, it would target only the park grant, they would only be able to apply for the park grant, yes, they would not be able to apply for the grant regarding that House bill, and I forget the number, earmarked piece of legislation, they wouldn't be applying that piece, but they also wouldn't be able to search for other grant opportunities if that language were to go through. That said, to the extent you, your motion as originally written, the motion to amend is put forward, and it hasn't been, but to the extent it's put forward, it would be non-binding, it would just simply take the temperature of town meeting to ensure that if that money were passed as part of the legislation, that it would be applied as stated, but again, it would be non-binding at this point. Understood?
Yep, thank you.
Are you withdrawing the motion at this point in time?
I will.
Okay, just trying to be clear.
Appreciate it.
Hi, so with that motion, with the amendment, it says the ball fields and the playground, if there was a way that it would be half and half?
Should we true it?
Oh, because...
It's non-binding.
It's not binding, I understand, it's not binding, but I think that there's a lot of talk of that money being used for the playground and having those grants, I want to be able to have grants, being able to be afforded to them, but I want to make sure that when it's afforded, that it's afforded to the two. Legally, if it says the two things, that it goes towards those two things when it gets to the House and Senate and it is approved, can it go to one of those two things?
Sheila, are you talking about the money that's being requested through the House bill?
Yes.
She didn't move that.
I understand, but if that is approved and we get that money, and it says it's for the fields and for the playground, can the town only use it for the playground?
If that's how the legislation is written, you're bound by the legislation.
So it has to be used for both projects.
What's the language of the legislation?
It says parks and ball fields. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Just for a little clarification, Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair of the Recreation Commission. So this money was asked specifically for the playground project. As you have heard, it's going to be fairly expensive, and I went to Rep. Lenatra seeing if we could get any state funds to help, knowing that we need the vote to do it. When she put the language in the bill, it's essentially for the Recreation Department, and it says playgrounds and/or ball fields, because if we, either way, if it gets voted in, we're going to get the money, even if we don't vote it here, so then we can actually use it for something else, just to let everybody know. But it was specifically earmarked...
It says fields and playgrounds.
And that's exactly what I just said, but it was specifically requested originally for the playground.
Thank you. Hold on, Ms. Lenatra's coming back.
To that point, though, and this is where I guess I want the clarification as to why this is even coming up, he's been lauding this on Facebook, that there is approximately 10% raised for this project, and he's been including this earmarked, respectfully earmarked, not given, $50,000, and he's been saying that it's been raised already for this project, which is where this entire confusion came from. So I'm standing up here looking like a fool right now because you've been telling everybody that there's $50,000 available that's earmarked for this project, it has not been approved yet. So with that said, again, I want to caution the language here, just so that the rest of the town body knows that there have been projects that were approved in the past by the CPC for the ball fields, it's a CPC-approved project, and they've been removed from this article because of the cost of the playground. So for that reason, I would encourage people to vote no for this playground due to the cost right now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify, Kathy Lenatra, 48 Forest Street, I was also approached, and I hate to tell you this, but I was also approached by the field guys. So this was for the Kingston Recreation Department, as you can probably tell, I do not go on Facebook, so I don't know all the chatter that's been going on, but that's what it was meant for. Thank you.
All right, can we, ready to discuss the project? Let's present the project.
Good morning, Susan Woodworth, 136 Grove Street, and also the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Town of Kingston. So this project is a very important project to the Town of Kingston, Gray's Beach Park, which many of you are familiar with, is a great property that we have in our community. The playground, as Dan mentioned, is currently over 18 years old. It was designed several years ago, 18 years ago, by our community, actually through a Recreation Department program called Playgroup, and it was many families that came together and actually created an opportunity to help build this playground. So at this time, we have done many maintenance projects over the years, and we have continued to try to maintain the property as we need to do as we move forward. But again, as Dan mentioned, after 18 years, surface erosion and excessive rust are compromising the structural integrity of the playground equipment. We have provided a lot of information prior to this on our platform at the KingstonRec.com website, we've also provided additional information at multiple meetings that I've attended and supported to try to share this information with our community as best we can. We did do a playground safety inspection audit, it's called, in 2021, October 2021. We do do some low-frequency inspections throughout the years, but the audit is more detailed. The audit provides more information on not just the equipment, but the site, the location of the property, the site work of the property, so there's a lot more involved in a particular audit. We hire a certified safety playground inspector, which is recommended by our town's insurance company, Maya, they recommend that we hire that kind of inspector to do these audits. They would defer to this type of an audit and to this inspection when making safety decisions for our community. So with doing that, once the audit came back, it came to our attention that we really are at the end of this life for this particular playground. So we started doing some research, we had some community focus groups, we included a lot of opportunities through the Recreation Commission meetings to have people come to our meetings, to provide different support, provide information. Again, none of these decisions are made in a vacuum, we're here for our community, that's what our job is to do, so we asked the community what different types of things we needed to do. One of my jobs as well is to try to be involved in what is happening in the industry, I attend National Recreation Park Association meetings, Massachusetts Rec and Park Association meetings, to try to figure out what's happening within the environment of the recreation fields. One of the opportunities that provided me with the last year's attendance of the National Rec and Park Association is learning about different opportunities within our playground communities, what can we do differently in our playgrounds than we currently have, and one of the things that came out is this particular design, this conceptual design, and again, just to clarify that, it is a conceptual design, we still are an opportunity where we can make some changes, we need to make changes due to funding, due to some questions the community might have, different things like that. So the design that we had provided is, again, a conceptual design, but it provided us an opportunity to move forward, get some information on the cost of the project. So this particular design that we went forward with is what they're calling a universal design. It provides lots of opportunities to our community in many ways that this current playground does not do. It provides the opportunity for some ADA accessibility, which we do not have at our current playground, that is a concern moving forward. By doing that, we also provide the opportunity for us as a community to go forward for some grants, there's some municipal grants that come up to ADA opportunities, so this, by providing part of this design, we can do that. This is an open-format design, considered a little different than some of our existing playgrounds that you might see in other communities, they're called post-and-deck or clamp systems, where there's a lot of things, just like the one we have currently down there, a lot of opportunities where you have a little bit more closed-in spaces, it's more challenging for some people, it's challenging maybe for grandparents, my mom uses a walker, she would have a hard time using, you know, being with grandchildren in this particular environment that we currently have. But this design provides more of an opportunity for families to be together, grandparents, kids, kids of all ages, the design of this one also provides an opportunity, so instead of segregating a two-to-five structure and a five-to-12, if you have two, three, four kids, and they're all different age groups, it's kind of challenging if you're one parent going down there, or one grandparent or caregiver, and you have children in different components of this particular playground. So again, this playground provides that opportunity that has more of an open-format plan, that you can play together, provides the opportunity for some of the older kids to be mentors to the younger kids, and again, it just provides so many different elements, we've added a component of music in here, we have sensory issues that are added in here, again, some ADA situations, some kids have sensory issues, there's components in here where kids might be able to go in a different part of the playground or under a structure that can give them the opportunity to take a break. So there's been a lot of things that we've thought about when we designed this program, and again, we didn't do this in a vacuum, we held multiple meetings at the Recreation Commission, we also asked some of our users of the playground, the kids that are going there, so we had multiple programs running throughout this time period where we asked the kids, we showed them the design, what kind of design did they want. It really did provide an opportunity for us to get their input, and I'm excited to include some of their ideas into this design, which we have done already. So again, lots of information, we work, currently working with a vendor who is a vendor of multiple playground companies, so it's not just one company that we researched, this particular company works with many, many vendors, and so it provided us the opportunity to look at what might be best for our community, and that's where we came up with this particular design. Yes, it is expensive, it's not inexpensive, I don't disagree with anybody there on that. However, it is something that we need to do for our community. There is a safety concern, as Dan mentioned, we have had to pull apart some of the playground equipment already, we've replaced multiple components, we have site work that's an issue right now, if you go down there, you'll see that part of the playground is actually sectioned off, there's orange area where we have a lot of roots that are coming up, we also have decomposition of 18 years' worth of mulch that we continue to put in there, we do do the mulch replacement every single year, but there's compaction and there's decomposition, and now that's causing a problem on the site as well, where it's a severe trip hazard, when it rains there, you get a lot of areas that just don't dry out, and then that becomes a challenge as well for many people. So there's all those components combined that actually came up with this cost for this. With regard to the park grant, which we just mentioned, again, this just provides us an opportunity to go to other funding opportunities. There's a possibility, if we can get some other grants, maybe we can return some of this money, we have been able to do that in the past, we've returned money just in one of these articles moving forward earlier, we returned some money from another project, so that is our goal too, is to see how we can look at other resources. This park grant is one opportunity, ADA municipal grants are another opportunity. The challenge with some of those grants, unfortunately, is our town meeting happens in the spring, a lot of these grants don't happen until the summer or the fall, so if we are able to secure this funding now, I would still continue to research those grant opportunities for our community. Some of them wouldn't be funded until November, some of them might be funded in the early part of the late summer. So once we have that information, then we can provide that to our community as well. So again, if anybody has any questions specific to the design or the funding costs, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
Open it up for debate.
I'm Ashley.
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn, 7 Frank Street, also a selectman, I was one of the ones that was a nay for the park, and I just want to let people know as to my reasoning. I myself love the park, I think it's great, I'm not against having kids have a park, I want to say I have a four-year-old, 11-year-old, a 15-year-old, and I love Gray's Beach. It is really, the cost of it that is really frustrating to me, it seems, it's an extreme cost, and I understand that, I do feel like we need to look at the cost of it, it just seems excessive to me. I'm happy about the grants, just real quickly, I know that we said other, that there are other funding sources, I know, I listened to FinCom, I've listened to all your different meetings, but just because there is a lot of talk in the town, and I think it's important to discuss this, that I know the ball fields had come up, but also the volleyball courts that were not, that we did not put up based on that, there was an issue with that, and that money was not returned to CPC, but would actually be used for the playgrounds. So we won't be building the volleyball courts, that money would go towards that, and that was approved at a town meeting, along with, you know, these ball fields. So I understand where we're coming from, and I, the design itself seems very young childlike, so I just wanted to see, again, to make sure that we have that five-to-12-year-old, you know, really in there, understanding the different aspects of the older child and not just the younger children. So those were really my only, my concerns. That $600,000 price tag, I know it's tough, I know a lot of it has to do with certain aspects that are going to be expensive, and I totally get that, but those are the things that I just wanted to make sure I had my questions.
Thank you.
So thank you, Sheila, for that information and for your comments, just a couple things just to touch on, again, on the cost, we did do some research other communities, it was provided in some of our slideshows and our presentations, is it right now the cost that we've projected, you know, and unfortunately, we are in a day and age where just things are very expensive, we have to pay prevailing wages in the state of Massachusetts, one of the other high costs is the port-and-place material, which provides that ADA accessibility and accessibility to some of our community members, so that particular material is extremely expensive. Just with regard to the volleyball court too, I'd just like to mention that as well, so yes, that volleyball court was approved at a prior town meeting, however, when we began researching the cost, again, we were also surprised and concerned about the cost. So again, this decision was a thoughtful decision and a thoughtful conversation, both with myself and members of our Recreation Commission, to see what we can do for our community to help provide opportunities and not to use all these resources if we don't have to, or how can we reallocate some resources that might already be there. The volleyball court had not been able to be constructed prior to this, so the decision was made, does it make sense maybe for right now to hold off on that volleyball court and move this money towards the playground project because it is so expensive and unexpectedly expensive? So again, it was a very thoughtful decision for our community to try to reallocate funds that hadn't been utilized, and I've used this in a presentation, and it's kind of like one of those things when you're a homeowner and you say, oh, it would be great to have a pool, and you decide to build a pool, and then all of a sudden, your roof is leaking, and you have to kind of look at that and go, okay, this is a safety issue, so we have to reallocate some funds. That really is what we did here, is we decided that as an organization and the commission, that the playground is a priority, so hopefully, maybe some point down the road, we could reallocate some funds, CPC money continues to be replenished by our community, so maybe there will be another opportunity for this volleyball court for our community, but it was decided that this is, seems to be the priority at this particular point in time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Janet Stanford, 53, Evergreen Street. So my concern is, I feel like there hasn't been a lot of fundraising, you know, within the community. So, you know, I thought about it during the week, you know, looking on Facebook, reading what, you know, people were posting and commenting, so I came up with an idea, maybe it needs some tweaking, but my idea was to offer, for the town to offer a transfer station sticker, I said lifetime, like free transfer station sticker for the lifetime, maybe you could reduce it to 10 or 20 years, but I was thinking you could raffle off, you know, a chance to earn this magic sticker, and you could, like $100 a pop, you know, I would pay $100 for the chance to have a transfer sticker for 10, 20 years. If you think about it, I actually called the, ah, I'm blanking, the Highway Department yesterday, and I found out there were about 4,000 people that use the transfer station, so even if 100 people bought a ticket for $100, you know, you have $100,000 towards, to defray the cost of this playground. So I'd like the town to consider something like that, like, and what you also said a little while ago about the grants, you know, you can apply for the grants during the summer, or you don't get them till the summer, I think this should be held off until the fall. I think my idea is a good idea, maybe someone will come up with a better idea, but I think I would like to see this come back up at the special town meeting, I would be in favor of it if there was some more fundraising, and that's all I have to say. I don't like the boat, I saw the renderings, I don't, I don't see the point of that boat, but other than that, my kids are older, they don't really use the playground, so I'll leave other people to talk about the design.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Cortland Hill, 31 Hounds Lane, I see it says $9,000 for disposal of existing equipment, what is the current value of the playground itself there currently, and also is one able to purchase it?
So no, there's a liability concern with that, so as you start to take things apart, especially something that's been deemed a safety issue, there is a huge liability issue with that as far as, so that, I don't believe that the town would be able to sell that particular as a surplus equipment because it would be deemed as a safety issue, but I will defer to somebody else.
Yeah, maybe ask the council.
I mean, I honestly don't know what exists there for infrastructure, I don't know what, if it's possible to sell it as scrap, I have no idea, I couldn't speak to it.
Well, could one sign a waiver and purchase it? So say the town were to go and dismantle it, because I think what's there right now, again, they say there's some safety issues and concerns, but I think for many people, it's valuable equipment that they're more than happy to use, so if one were to go and sign a safety wa, a waiver releasing the town of liability, would one be able to purchase it, or whoever the construction demolition team would be?
Theoretically, it's possible.
Yeah, because I think that's, again, a great idea, I think people could go and purchase that and be happy to purchase that, I'd purchase it, depending on the price, so just that's, no, it's the truth, and so again, that's another idea, and I thought Ms. Stanford had a great idea as well. This, great, great ideas, I object to this because of the price, and also, I think what's there right now is more than suitable, thank you.
Thank you. I'll get you a chance to respond at the end, yes, ma'am.
Susan Sherman, 215 Main Street, I say kudos to Susan Woodworth and her committee, they have identified a problem and are taking action, isn't that what we want people to do that are town employees or elected officials? I only wish the same concern would be given to our roads and sidewalks. I support this article, I support maintaining our property.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Lorraine Bergio, 42 Winter, I want to go back a little bit to the vote at town meeting for the volleyball court that never took place, and there's discussion about using those funds for something else. I'm a little confused how a vote to approve funds for a volleyball court can be moved to another use without discussing it with town meeting. Am I wrong, or am I missing something? Thank you.
It's on now? Okay, good, yeah, I can address that. So the way the CPC funding works is that it has, each project has to be sponsored by a department...
I have a, I'm sorry, Lorraine Bergio, 42 Winter. I want to go back a little bit to the vote at town meeting for the volleyball court that never took place, and there's discussion about using those funds for something else. I'm a little confused how a vote to approve funds for a volleyball court can be moved to another use without discussing it with town meeting. Am I wrong, or am I missing something? Thank you.
It's on now? Okay, good. Yeah, I can address that.
So the way the CPC funding works is that it has, each project has to be sponsored by a department or a, you know, town organization like the Rec Commission. So the Rec Commission was the department that originally requested the funds for that project, you know, in town meeting a year ago, which were, they were approved. Once the funds go back or go into the department, it's up to them to spend them, you know, according to the project bylaws, or guidelines, I should say, not bylaws, but the guidelines of the project that were approved at CPC. If the project funds are not spent, CPC requires that those funds come back into CPC, back into the bucket from which they originally were, you know, came from. So in this case, it would have been open space, we had forty-some thousand dollars that were allocated to that project. The project was not able to occur because the location that was chosen actually wasn't insufficient, once we got the company in to look at the space. So those funds then became essentially trapped, so either they needed to come back into CPC or right now, they're still, they're still allocated to that project. So Sue's point is, the funds actually are still out there for use for a volleyball court, but we'd still have to find a location suitable at Gray's Beach for that to still maintain within the project guidelines. So the fact is, we didn't really transfer, no one's really transferred those funds to the playground, that's not possible, that's not actually how it works. How it works is those funds would be returned back to CPC and put back into that funding bucket. So it's actually a completely separate transaction from the playground. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about that, but that's, that's not actually how it works.
I'm not confusing it with the playground, I'm talking specifically about town meeting approved an article for a volleyball court that is impractical and unable to put there.
Right.
So why aren't those funds put back into CPC?
Yeah, got it.
Until they have an opportunity to do a better job scoping out the land, the property, the location. That money should be returned and not bait and switch to another project.
Right, exactly, understood. And so that, that's correct. And so either those funds will be returned, and CPC, again, we're sending letters out to everyone who has allocated funding right now that's not using it. Everyone's going to have to respond to CPC to say whether they're going to use those funds, or else those funds must be returned. So that's actually, we're in process of getting funds like that now back into CPC. But you're correct, those funds would actually have to come back. Now, if the Rec Commission or anyone else who has funding available that's still out there wants to propose, within the original project guidelines, that they are going to spend those funds in the next year, then CPC will consider that again and let them still spend those funds, but it has to be with the intent of the original proposal. Otherwise, those funds must come back.
That was my understanding, that you can't bait and switch. So could that money be used to do a design and engineer on location of where they want to put this new volleyball court, if in fact it does come to fruition? Or is it, would have, would a separate vote have to be taken for them to take a closer look at where they want to place it to avoid what we had happen last year?
Right. I'd have to look at the writing of the original proposal to see if it included engineering studies. If it did, then that money could still be used for that purpose, but if the purpose was only for installation, then likely that would have to be, a project had to be revoted at town meeting.
Okay, and if the funds are returned, does it come to town meeting for permission to return?
No, so the return of funds back to CPC does not require a town vote.
Okay, thank you for all your answers.
No worries, yeah.
I appreciate it.
That was a good point of clarification, yeah.
Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive, again, Chair of the Rec Commission. I know the volleyball court's been a thing, like Dan said, the money's still there. And as Sue said, when we first heard the price of what this was going to cost, yeah, we were both kind of floored by it. It's expensive. I've heard people talk about how nice the playground is down at Nelson Beach in Plymouth. That park costs $476,000. It's just expensive, it's the nature of the beast right now. I think the simple question is, do people want a playground at Gray's Beach, or do they not want a playground at Gray's Beach? That's just kind of the oversimplification of it. I had a chance to meet a lot of mums down there, which was nice, I've seen a few and heard some little ones peeping in the background, so it's nice that they came out to vote. Just a quick thing on fundraising. We've done some fundraising, we did a polar plunge, the first one ever, I think, in Kingston Bay there on January 2nd, that Selectman Vaughn even attended to help raise money for the playground. We've done a pickleball tournament, we just sold some pickleball apparel. We asked our state representative for $50,000 to help offset the cost. We've done whatever we can to try and raise some money. Fundraising is not easy. I would love it if we could sell the magic ticket dump sticker, that would be great. Somebody wants to come on board, put that together for us, raise 100 grand, that would be fantastic. But I hope everybody appreciates the work that Sue has put in, and I hope everybody supports the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary. Hi. This is a tough one, we knew that this was going to generate a lot of discussion and some very good conversation, and when it came before the Finance Committee, our original vote on this project was unanimously in opposition to it, and I don't want to speak for my fellow board members, but one of the reasons was sticker shock. And I think it's fair to say that a lot of people in this room are struggling with the cost of this playground. So I just wanted to take a minute to sort of refresh your memory that about eight years ago, I stood before this very body and I asked for the use of CPC funds for a playground project. That playground project was right outside here at the intermediate school, and $150,000 eight years ago, to me, seemed extravagant. And I came before this body thinking they're probably not going to support it. What ended up happening was that this body did thankfully support that project, and it was a very, very modest upgrade to the playground outside. It included adding a couple of swings and two small structures to an existing playground. It did deal with some drainage work and also the concrete walkway, but it wasn't frivol, it wasn't a luxurious upgrade, but eight years ago, it was expensive. It was expensive back then, and in fact, it was a project that actually, if it weren't for the incredible generosity of a gentleman who was here earlier today, I don't see him, Mr. Sean Dormody, and I'd like to thank him, if it wasn't for his generosity, that part of that project would not have been completed, specifically the concrete walkway. He's an amazing gentleman, tackled that project and donated a lot of his time and his resources, and maybe that's his wife over there. And I, these things are expensive, that's my point, and they were expensive eight years ago, they're just getting more expensive, and that's not to even replace an entire playground. The other thing, just real quick about the design, yeah, there are a lot, there are some people who are not enamored with the sailboat design. Obviously, it's in flavor with being at the beach and, you know, part of why they chose that, but I want to caution us as a group, a collective group, because we're not necessarily the ones who are going to be using this playground. The kids are going to be using it. And we grew up in a generation where we were standing on monkey bars and flipping swings over bars, and we grew up in a different generation, but kids play differently today. And Sue made it clear that they, the Recreation Department has held a number of programs over the last several months where they floated these designs in front of the kids, the kids who are going to be using it, the consumers of this product. And they chose this design, so I think we need to respect the fact that the folks who are going to be using it have a vested interest in the way that it looks. And we're probably not going to be the one who's playing capture the flag climbing up at the top of the sail. So I, oh, so I just want to offer those as perspectives regarding the cost and the design. Thank you.
Yes ma'am?
Which one?
You ma'am.
Okay, I'll go. Okay, my name is Dorothy Pat Hollow, I live at Three Pebble Lane in Kingston, Massachusetts. And I don't even know where to begin with this. The first thing I'll mention to Andy, that if we voted on this park for you, and then someone decided in the background, they didn't want it, and they were going to shift the money to someplace else, I think you'd be irritated tremendously, like the people who wanted the volleyball court, and they didn't get it, even though it was voted on. Point one. Point two, as far as accidents are concerned at the park, how frequently has there been a report or a child sent to the hospital because they were injured at the park? Anyone know that? Okay, so move on. So then we can talk about, well, insurance, actually. Is the town not indemnified, or is there no kind of relationship between accidents and insurance in this town? Is there? Okay, I'll move on. So the next thing would be that you had mentioned that, you know, look at it from a kid's point of view and all that, but I may to understand that grandparents can go on it too, so it's not going to be restricted to just children. And to children's numbers, I live right by the park, I go by there at least once a day, if not twice, and I look in to see what's going on in the park, and I don't see it flooded with kids. I just don't. And I think you should understand that. Any of you who live near the park can look who's there, who's not. Maybe during the summer months, there may be an influx, what, 50 kids maybe in the park, but not necessarily. So I think that's kind of a moot discussion. Now to the park itself, I got ahold of, I asked for, the investigations, I call them, about the park and the facilities there. I think I got three of them. I think the first one was the best because it pinpointed everything, never said to replace the whole park. Then I looked at the second and the third, then I tried to put them all together to see where the similarities were. And basically, two and three were basically replica of the first one, and it did not say that the park had to be replaced. What it did say were there were bolts that were rusted, and there were some chairs that could be replaced, but it wasn't this universal, let's just jump in and do this, because it sounds like a good thing to do, when we don't even have an estimate. We don't even have an estimate of how much it's going to cost. So I think these are considerations that you might want to think about when you vote for this, and if you vote for this, where you kind of are implying that we should pay for it, don't let anyone change the plans and change it up for maybe the volleyball court. Who knows? I don't know. But these are considerations, and not, it's not easy, and I think that Sue Sherman was very pleasant when she introduced it, she came in the front door, great idea, Sue did a great idea, but she also got in the back door about the roads, and so there are so many things in this town that have to be addressed before the park, and I think they should be addressed for us. That's all I say, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. We're going to go forward with new information now, so I understand certain people feel certain ways about the park. If you, at the podium, you have something new, I'd love to hear it, but let's not repeat what's already been said.
New information.
Okay.
It's actually in regards to the discussion about the volleyball court being voted and not being moved forward, and you're suggesting that those funds are still being held. Nine years ago, eight, nine years ago, when I started to attend town meeting, that's when the $600,000 field allocation for the Opachinsky Field Complex was voted and supported, and subsequently was moving forward with funding, and then the big dig was unearthed and the project had to be stopped. Those funds no longer exist in CPC. So when, when I came up here today, multiple times now, to mention the ball field, that was removed from the CPC funding, for, it was not moved forward to town meeting for CPC funding. That, that funding was allocated, it was allocated back in 2013, 2014, and now it does not exist anymore. So I'm going to caution all of you that did vote in support of the volleyball court, and I'd imagine if I was here, I did as well. If it goes back and another project comes up, that does not mean that the projects will be funded going forward. It basically, it kind of, kind of goes by recollection and memory, and who's able to say, well, wait a second, like, we put forward this project, or we were told that we could have one field restored each year, because the Opachinsky Field Complex is 18 years old as well. The fields do not drain properly, if it rains, the fields are unplayable. There's a field person here that's probably about to speak and all of him, but there's, there's multiple other issues in town and multiple other departments that this funding could have been used for, and arguably, some of that funding, to your answer to her question, should have already or still been available for the fields, and it's not anymore. So I don't, I don't know, you know, how many more times we can be told one thing, but something else is done. And so I would caution against anyone who wants a specific project that does not happen, that it does not, there's no promise that it's going to happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a chance at the end. Thanks.
Emily Davis, 24 Clifton Drive. Mr. Davis, the Recreation Commissioner asked, you know, the decision is whether or not we want a playground or don't, and I just had a question about, we have five playgrounds in the community, as I understand it, I could be wrong, but what are the ages of the other playgrounds? Because if it costs $500,000 every time we have to replace a playground, and it's every 15 to 20 years, where are we at with the other four playgrounds right now? And what are we looking at in the next five to 10 years for needing to replace those? Because, like, the playgrounds out here get used every single day by hundreds of kids and are available to our community, so the use of those might be something we want to consider if they need to be replaced in the next couple of years versus the Gray's Park Playground, which maybe has less frequent usage.
Go ahead.
So we don't oversee all the other playgrounds, the only other one we oversee under the Recreation jurisdiction is the Captain Fred L. Bailey Playground behind the Reed property. That one was just replaced in 2016, the other ones were all on school properties, so we don't have jurisdiction over them, so unfortunately, I can't speak on behalf of them, so I'm not sure how that would work out.
Could-
Probably go out into the school, school budget, I would imagine, or some other type of funding source.
So community preservation funds could not be used for any of those other playgrounds?
That is not correct, they could be used. So anybody can, and Dan can speak a little bit more on this, but anybody can submit an application to the Community Preservation Committee, and then that application would be a value determined and decided whether it was actually a viable project, and then the Community Preservation Committee would make the decision based off the funds that are available. So any, anybody could put forth an application for those playgrounds as well.
Okay. Is there anybody here who could speak to the age of the elementary and intermediate school playgrounds, if those are something that are, is on the need to be replaced in the next couple of years?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Payne.
Someone just wants to respond, come forward ma'am.
Sorry.
Debbie Grace, 6 Pine Ridge Lane. I can speak too, we applied six years ago to the CPC to build the integrated preschool playground, so that was built six years ago. And just to agree, to speak to the cost, that was almost $200,000, $200,000 six years ago, so the cost of this playground is, I feel, right on target.
Thank you.
Matt Lukey is here, I believe, in, he was here, I don't know if he's here anymore, but he was here from the schools, and, but I can say that as a former Chair of the Kingston Elementary School Committee, for the, for capital planning for 2020, up to 2025, I've not seen any playground, anything for playground to be restructured or to have any of that, and that's for 20, up until 2025, I have not seen anything on the capital planning for that. So just to let you know, that's, that's where I'm at, but I don't know if he was still here, but I don't see.
Yes ma'am?
Hi, Rebecca Payne, 6 Our Prospect Court.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone, I know you have a child-
Sorry. I just wanted to address some of the comments about whether or not people use the playground. I think part of the issue is it's not necessarily a safe playground to use, so, you know, for instance, I go down to Nelson Park, as it was brought up earlier, and I talked to other moms there, and there's a lot of Kingston residents that drive all the way down there because that's where they feel safest with their kids playing. You know, it, Gray's Beach is a permitted beach, residents would gladly pay to use, but I currently am a resident of Kingston, and I pay to use other facilities in other towns because they're safer and more fun, quite honestly, for my child and myself, my family, so.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, S.J. Craft, 2 Country Way. My question is, do we have a final design? We have a half a million dollar project here, is there a final design? I don't have Facebook, unfortunately, my wife does.
It's probably a good thing.
So I keep seeing things like, oh, we could possibly add this to it, or we could possibly put a zip line and so on. And so my problem is, is that money there? Has it been allocated? Is there a final design, or is there not? Are we voting on an actual playground or a possible playground? That seems to be changed based on who's asking. That's my question.
Sure, so again, it is a conceptual design, I can't say that it's a final design only because we don't have the final bids, and we did get pricing back before, so we do have an estimate on the design that we currently have in place. But until we actually go out to bid, once this is approved at town meeting, if it's approved, that's when we'll be able to go out to bid and find, if we may have to make some adjustments, depending on where we come back with cost, we just don't know what that will be. But the conceptual design is pretty, pretty determined at this particular point, and if we need to make some adjustments due to funding, that is what we'll do. With regard to the zip line, just like to clarify that, we did investigate that, because that was something that people brought up, that's a very expensive piece of equipment, and I was told by some of the playground manufacturers that it's a great piece of equipment, however, if you are concerned with your budget, that's not the best use of the funds, because some of those zip lines can go upwards from 30 to $50,000 just for that structure, and only one child can use it at a time. So we were looking at the play value of some of the equipment, I would love to have a zip line there, however, I didn't think it was, we talked about it at the commission meeting, and we talked about it with our vendor, and if you're looking at the value of play, which is what we look at sometimes when we're making these designs, it didn't seem to be the most fruitful with regard to the cost already being a concern.
So you're saying that if someone is saying- So you're saying that if someone is saying on behalf of commission that, oh, possibly we could put a zip line, that would be misleading?
I'm not.
Because it was on Facebook.
Again, I can't speak on behalf of Facebook. I also don't have Facebook.
I don't have Facebook. I can just tell you what I've read. But I think.
There's no plan for a zip line, and I'm guessing there's no final plan or budget for the playground as of now? But we have a conceptual idea of what we want. Is that fair to say? Ma'am? Okay.
So we're gonna vote on half a million dollars or more with no plan? That's what I'm getting.
There's, there's a plan in your book, it's not a final.
I've seen the plan. It's a concept.
Yes, that's, that's what they're saying, sir.
So no final cost, just a concept.
No final bill has been provided to the town, is my understanding. Is that accurate?
Correct. And again, again, with regard to the conceptual design, we, we cannot determine and say this is the exact design until we actually finalize it and go out to bid. We received, we created this conceptual design so that we would have a number to allocate towards town meeting. That money is gonna be then utilized with this design and moving forward and figuring out where the budget lies. That's how the process works. You start this process almost a year prior to being able to actually do the construction or to start a project. This process started back in October of 2021. As we know, things change. So we continue to move forward. So if I were here today and say this is exactly the design, and we had to make adjustments and shifts based off of the funding that then comes in after that, then I would then be doing a disservice to our community. So yes, this is a design that we would like to put forth, and it will depend on the final numbers that come in once it is approved at town meeting.
Yes, sir.
Bob Kloska, fifty-five South Street. I have two points. Point number one is, I was called chair of a committee that built the last playground in Kingston in 1990. And if people are talking about fundraising, careful what you wish for. It'll be virtually impossible to raise the kind of money you're talking about to build the kind of playground that we need in Kingston by fundraising. And we, myself and several other people in town spent two years of our lives essentially, almost every day, doing something to get that done. And I want to give a lot of credit to the group of people that put this proposal together because it's comprehensive and it shows a lot of thought. The second thing I would like people to remember is, if you look around here, we're all of a certain age, and we have spent the last two or three years in a very difficult time. That's two or three years out of a person who is fifty, sixty, seventy years old. For a child, that's half their life, or a third of their life. And isn't it about time that we do something for them to make their life a little bit more comfortable? Give them an opportunity to maybe be the kids that they really wish they could be, that parents wish they could be, but haven't been able to for the last couple of years.
Thank you. And last person?
On behalf of the moms that are keeping their little ones quiet, I'd like to move the question.
Yeah, but I had a hand up here, so I'm gonna hold that for one thought. Go ahead.
So just lastly, I just wanted to clarify that when I had looked up the January minutes of twenty five to of your meetings, it had said that you were going to ask the Rec Commission, or Sharpshire was going to ask the Rec Commission for that money back to go back to the CPC. So I'm not sure if it did go back, or, but it said in the January sixth meeting minutes that you would ask for it to go back. So I'm not sure if it stayed there because you were already in discussions about the playground.
Yeah, the, the process to return the funds is basically a letter that goes from whoever has the funds to back to CPC, saying they're going to return them. So that has not happened yet. We have, to your point, during that meeting, we had that discussion of whether we would return the funds. I served both on Rec Commission and CPC, so I was on both parts of that.
So you wrote about it to yourself? Okay.
Yeah, almost. But no, but, but basically the discussion was that, you know, if we needed the additional funds, then they would be returned. The one thing that I'll just quickly mention here is that at the time that we were having these discussions, there was another project that was on the, on the docks to buy a piece of property in town that was a hundred thousand dollars called Pratt's Pond. We did not have enough money at the time to fully fund all of the open space projects. Through our, and that's a lot of where this discussion about both the ball fields and the volleyball court came from in terms of postponing those projects until a later date. Not canceling, but postponing. So the, the discussion was that since we didn't have the $400,000 land grant back yet from the purchase of the Winthrop Street property, we would postpone those until the fall. That was really what the discussion was about. What happened subsequent to that is that we had asked for the, the comm commission to go talk to the owner of the property at Pratt's Pond about donating the property instead of having the town buy it. And they did that. So, you know, we were lucky in the sense that it was a very generous donation by that family to give that property back. That saved us the money. Had we not had that, we actually would have had the funding at the time to fund all of these projects. So just keep that in mind. It was, you know, when we, when we talked about the volleyball court and B two, which at the time was B one, those projects are still, you know, on the docket. And the, and the ball fields were still to be presented this fall, so they could still get done this year. So just to clarify.
Seeing no one else on the podium, let's, let's go to a vote. I have Board of Selectmen, three to two. I have the Finance Committee, one in favor, three opposed. The Community Preservation is three to one, and Capital Planning is three to one. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Where's my countess? If, if you're in favor of the construction of a playground, can you take out your purple cod and raise it in the air? Strom Strong? I think I know my answer, but all those opposed, could they raise their cards? I heard you. Ninety-two in favor, thirty-nine opposed. Motion, project carries. Ready to go to the last project?
Okay, so for the final project that we have for CPC on this town meeting is Motion seven for Article twenty-two. Move the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act community housing funds. A sum of money for $180,000 is presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to fund the Affordable Housing Trust General Fund. Do you want to speak to this directly, or do you want me to start? All right, let me just start with this very quickly, and then Jean Landis is here to also discuss it. So there are two different organizations within a town that can accept CPC funding and then spend them for various projects that are undefined, meaning that essentially we're transferring the funds from CPC to another group that is better suited to spend those, those monies. Affordable Housing Trust is one of those two within the town. Previously, in a town meeting, I believe it was 2015, a sum of money was transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust for use for housing projects within the town. This year, the Affordable Housing Trust has asked for a similar set of money to be set aside for community housing projects. So this is $180,000 that would go to them. As part of this, we set up a grant agreement between CPC and the Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Committee that describes how those funds need to be spent. And it's very clear from Mass General Law that those CPC funds must be spent in a way that is consistent with the CPC legislation. So once those trends, those funds are transferred, they can't spend the money on anything they want. They must be spent in those, in that manner. However, the benefit of this is that they don't have to come back to town meeting every single time they want to spend money on a new project. So if a project arises that's out of cycle, you don't have to wait a full year to come back and get approval. So it really is a more flexible way of getting those, those funds that are specified for affordable housing into the hands of the people who are best suited to spend the money. And that's the intent.
Seeing no debate, I'll bring this to a vote. It's favorable Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, four to one, and Community Preservation Committee, six to one. Majority vote, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to take Article twenty-seven out of order.
The bylaws allow it by vote, so if it's a second, we can vote to take it out of order. Is there, is there a second? There's a second to take Motion twenty-seven as the next motion. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of taking the motion, Article twenty-seven out of order, say aye. All those opposed? By the time we count, we're gonna, all right, we gotta count it. I'll try one more time. All those in favor of taking the vote, Article twenty-seven out of order, say aye. All those opposed? I don't need to count it anymore. There's minimal opposition that time. So we will take Article twenty-seven as the next article. Who's moving it?
Move the town appropriate fourteen thousand five hundred from Waterways Improvement Fund for FY twenty-two to be expended for the purpose of engine replacement for the existing pump-out boat.
Go ahead.
Is there a second? Okay, great. The amendment would allow the Harbor Master to purchase a hire than anticipated. So in, in your handout right now, you see thirteen five. We had to amend that to fourteen five due to updated costs. This was, you know, kind of a, what I would consider to be an emergency situation. The Harbor Master has a fleet of three boats. And one of those boats is a pump-out boat that is used to remove wastewater from ocean vessels. That boat was originally purchased in the early nineties through a fund that's federal government, then through the state government. And what they do is, you make a purchase on that boat, and they reimburse that by seventy-five percent. So it's a great deal. And for this particular article, we're asking for the engine to be replaced on the existing boat because the boat itself is, is, you know, in fair condition. But an engine would then prolong the life and would also keep our costs down. So that fourteen thousand five hundred is coming out of the Waterways Improvement Fund. That fund doesn't come from the taxpayers. It comes from, it comes from the, the, all the fees from the racks mooring and floats in, from the Idina. And it's also half of the excess tax from the boats. So those funds are there for the purpose of boats, chains for moorings, new docks and things of that manner. As you've seen over the past years, we've, we've come and we've brought this before. So the best part about this, this particular situation, other than the fact that we are, this is a very, this came out of the last minute because the engine went down. And we're now, we're in the middle of the season, at the beginning of the season, and that engine, if we couldn't get it, you know, it would put us in a really tough position to only have two out of the three boats on the fleet. In addition to that boat being used as a pump-out boat, it's also one of the workboats. As you can imagine, with a fleet of only three boats, having one down is, is kind of a big deal. So with that being said, it's a timely manner to be able to get a boat that can remove wastewater, but also can be used for work around the harbor.
All right, I'll open it up for debate. See no, see no movement, let's take it to a vote. Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen was five zero, Finance Committee voted three to one. It's a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Going back to number twenty-four, who's got that? Tennis courts. Was this voted on in the other two towns already?
Emily Davis, twenty-four Clifton Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer a free cash sum of $197,880 to fund Kingston's portion of the cost of the tennis court reconstruction at the Silver Lake Regional High School, or take any other action relative thereto.
Can you just read the bottom part, move that the town transfer from free cash, the amount of?
Apologies, thank you. Move the town transfer from free cash the amount of $197,880 to fund Kingston's portion of the cost for the tennis court reconstruction at the Silver Lake Regional High School.
Okay. It's my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, the other two towns have already voted and approved this. So it's just Kingston's portion. Open it up for debate if anyone wants to be heard. Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry.
Question of clarification.
Go ahead.
Lorraine Bergio, forty-two, Winthrop. I understand that funding in regional schools is very convoluted. They have restrictions that don't necessarily apply to KI and KES. Now, what I would like to know is, at the end of the budget, and there's money left over, what happens to the leftover? Do they turn it back to the town and then it gets certified as free cash? Or do they keep that money?
I, we have an expert on that answer here, so I'm gonna, if I can call on Christine Haley, who's the business manager for the school district. Thank you.
Good morning, ma'am.
Hello. I don't want to say I'm an expert, but at the end of the school year, all of our funds that have not been spent would go back to what's called our excess and deficiency fund, which is similar to a town's free cash. And every year, we do go through a certification process with that. And keep in mind, we have a cap on what that reserve can be. It's capped at five percent of our budget, so it's about $1.2 million, that cap. And that's traditionally been used on an annual basis to fund the capital plan within the district to do all the maintenance of the things that need to be taken care of. Any roof repairs or working on that. We've put a lot of time and energy into the envelope of our building, or newer for the vocational departments of the students to be more current with what's happening in the outside world. The project like this for the tennis courts was just so overwhelming that it would have used our whole capital plan for, well, a big chunk of our capital plan for the year. So this is the one project that we look to go, look to go back towards the towns because we don't have anywhere else to go. We have our E and D fund, and that's it. We don't have any other resources available to us.
So currently, you have about one point something million?
No, our, it was recertified this year at $960,000. And our capital plan that's been approved for 2023 is $599,000.
So that leaves you about four hundred odd.
Correct.
Okay, what's the total cost of the tennis court, including Halifax and Plimpton?
$340,000.
So why wouldn't you use E and D for that?
If we did, we would have nothing in reserve. If we had an exceptional winter with snow removal, we would not have the capacity to do that. We have nothing else to fall back on. That's, that's our only reserve.
Okay. Why don't they turn back the money to the town like everybody else? I may not be a fair question for you.
I'll let counsel have that one.
Yeah.
It's just the requirement, it's just the requirement of the law. And think of it this way, your enterprise accounts, excess money goes into their surplus revenue, right? So it's the same exact thing, same exact process.
Okay.
Sheila.
So Sheila Vaughn, seven thirty, Kingston, Mass. So last year, the tennis court had gone on to, it came off of, of last town, town meeting because Halifax had said no. Halifax is probably one of the most fiscally conservative towns in anywhere around us. And they said yes because they know what these tennis courts look like and how they are. It is used for wellness, it is used for gym, it is used for everything in the school. It is not just tennis courts. It is used throughout the school, for the middle school and the high school, so six grades, use that on a daily basis for gym and for wellness. And there are huge cracks that were actually, they, they made some minor modifications last year just to get by, just to get by for this year. And so the E and D funds that they use, that is really the- D funds that they use, that is really their rainy day fund, and with the cost of gas and electricity and everything that's going on, to not have a little bit in there is scary. There was, or was going to be, or we are going to vote on a stabilization fund, capital fund, but the other town actually said, no, Kingston, we wanted to see if there was thoughts for that, because we want to have something like this in case this happens. So, Silver Lake is trying to actually fund their own, their own, you know, issues, but these types of things are larger projects than what they can cover. And the three towns, all three towns have to say yes to actually have it happen. And so, the other two, which, to be honest, are tougher than Kingston usually, said yes. So, that to me means, it really does need to be done. And for me, it's about wellness and gym. I have kids in the middle school and high school, growing up to the middle school, and they use it on a daily basis. It's not just about the tennis team using it. This is used for gym and wellness every single day.
I'm not going to argue the validity or the value that you find in everyday exercise. My only question was the source of funding. If they have money in the bank, why are they knocking on our door? But, as you said, they've only got, after they spend, roughly a hundred thousand dollars left as a balance. If they, if they spent that money there. Okay, thank you for the explanation, everybody.
Thank you. Seeing no. Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, in our meeting, they, we were told that these are the only tennis courts available to the public for Halifax and Plimpton as well. They don't have any other tennis courts, from my understanding, so the public also uses these tennis courts.
Yeah, we have a tennis court, right? The public does use the tennis courts as well as Silver Lake, but I know the town of Halifax does have tennis courts in their backfields, and they're actually trying to have them renovated right now because they're in disrepair.
Ma'am?
Megan Hickey, forty-two Winthrop Street. Can I just clarify that these new courts will also have pickleball lines, because that is another huge demand in our town that we are hearing about, pickleball courts. And I was told that these courts will have pickleball lines before we're approached for a pickleball court at Gray's Beach.
Matt Durkey, Seven Riverside, Director of Facilities for Silver Lake. The, the design of pickleball courts is in the works. We have gone through the Athletic Association to verify that we can have pickleball lines on the courts that would coincide with tournament play. So, we've gone that far. So, what we're looking for is to get this total amount to put the project forward, and if we can fit those into the, into the design process, we absolutely will. To Christine's point of the public using the courts, especially during the pandemic, we had a lot of use of the courts from the public, and we'd like to keep those courts open to the public as much as possible.
Thank you.
But in the current situation with the cracks that there are, it does become a safety issue.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else? Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee was a four to one vote. All those in favor of contributing to the construction of the tennis courts with the other two towns, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
May I make the motion to take Article thirty-three next? The earth-removal bylaw. We're gonna get really close down to the forum, I think, as we go along and the day continues. It's already twelve-thirty, and I think the bylaw is an important issue for our town, so I'd like you to consider taking it out of order.
As opposed to the other?
Second.
Second. That's thirty-three, sir?
Thirty-three, yep.
Yes. That was, that was on the consent agenda that passed at nine fifteen this morning. You're welcome. Thirty-three, we have a second, so it's a majority vote. I'm gonna take a vote on that as the bylaws call for it. All those in favor of taking Article thirty-three out of order as the next article to be heard at town meeting, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Count it. Takes longer to do it this way.
It does.
So, if you have your purple cards out, it's a majority vote to take thirty-three out of order. Raise your cards up, please. Are you voting? To take Article thirty-three out of order. All those in favor of taking Article thirty-three out of order, raise your purple cards.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Mr. Armstrong? All those opposed to taking it out of order, raise your cards?
He's doing it, he's getting a call up from over here, that's why you don't see. I know you, I told him here first, maybe. You told me that, you said bidding.
Yes, sir. Twenty. Eight. Is that one-eight or zero-eight? Mr. Armstrong. Number eight or eighteen? Eight, okay. Fifteen. Fails.
Forty-three fails, yeah.
Alright, thirty, where, the motion to advance fails, we're moving on to twenty-five. Twenty-eight and fifteen, thirteen and nine, fifteen, thirteen, nine. Who's got Article twenty-five? Who's presenting Article twenty-five?
Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is presenting it.
No, no, he can't move it if you're not a resident. So, the commissioners.
Commissioner in the House. Any conservation commissioners?
Yes. So, if you look at the part that says moves, moves the town, raise and appropriate, do you see that? Just one line. Just read that, and then describe what it is, or ask Matt to.
Move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of two hundred and sixty thousand for the purpose stated in the warrant.
And do you want me to read the description?
The Conservation Commission and Jones River Watershed Association have collaborated closely with the Mass Office of Coastal Zone Management and Environmental Partners Group to prepare a best management practice implementation project designed to minimize the untreated stormwater that flows into the Jones River at the Elm Street Bridge. To apply for grants to support the construction, match funding is needed. Timing between different grant cycles makes it difficult to apply if match funds are not already allocated. Ideally, if all grants are awarded, they may be used as a match for each other, lowering the town's financial burden. The difference in funds could then be applied to leverage further grant funding, furthering the cleanup of the Jones River and its watershed, and hopefully leading to the opening of the shelfage beds along the estuary.
Okay. Do we have a presentation on this? Do we have a second?
Yeah, there was a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Pinella, Conservation Agent, Carver resident. So, this is an infrastructure project. We have a study identifying major inputs degrading the Jones River estuary and Kingston Bay, and eventually Duxbury Bay. Previous grant projects have taken care of some of the issues, like in Delano Ave, Landing Road, Gray's Beach, among other projects. The DOT bridge at Elm Street is the next project on the list. My department has contracted a design dealing with the issues at Elm Street, which include chemical pollutants and fecal contamination. Environmental Partners put together a robust plan allowing for infiltration of contaminants and removal of sediment. We were only able to get a ballpark estimate on this project cost, and the recommendation from DEP and CZM, the agencies that are administering the grants we're going to be applying for, was to ask for as much as we could possibly need, because it's a lot easier to not spend it than it is to ask for more. Due to that, our project cost estimate was given a generous contingency, and we're currently looking at a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project cost. So, in order to apply for one of the grants that we're going to reply for, we need a forty percent match commitment. Now, that means I have to ask for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to be dedicated, you know, towards these projects. That does not mean that we have to spend all of that money, and ideally, we will not likely have to spend much of that money. But I understand, I'm up here asking for a large amount of money to be put aside for this. What I want you to understand is, the reason I'm asking for it now is because it gives the best chance to cost the least amount of money to the town of Kingston for this project to go forward. If we wait on this project, these grants may not be available at the same time again, meaning then we can't use them as a match for each other. Essentially, if we get both of the grants that I think we can get for this project, they can be used as match funding for each other. So, while I need to ask for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to be ready to apply for this grant, that doesn't mean we need to use that as a match for that project, provided we get both grants. They sort of cancel each other out, cost the town less money. I can't promise that that's gonna happen, so you have to vote with the understanding that, sure, we may spend most of that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars on getting this implementation project done. This is sort of a change that came out through going through the process with the Finance Committee and the BOS. Any funds that are not allocated towards this match for awarded grants by fall town meeting will be returned. So, essentially, if we are able to get both grants, and we don't need all or most of that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, any portion that we know we're not going to need is gonna get returned back in by the time that tax liability is applied. And just to reiterate again, this is an infrastructure project. There is an issue right now where there is fecal contamination, as well as other pollutants entering the Jones River, affecting the river, the bay. These are issues that we're going to eventually have to deal with. The town, you know, we have what's called the MS four permit that deals with stormwater discharge. That's federally regulated and regulated by the state. Eventually, if we don't deal with these issues, the state, the feds do come down and impose fines. So, this is something that we think we can get taken care of right now, while we have these grants available to us, and get it hopefully taken care of with the least possible financial burden to the town of Kingston. So, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I'll open it up for debate.
Thomas Puchad, Sixth Quail Run. Back in, I'm looking at Ollie, because when we started the sewer, I think it was in the late nineties, that was the first step, and it did a hu, it did a great job in helping to clean up the bay. But this is simply the next step to getting this river clean, which will get the bay clean. And it's not the last step. There's other outfall pipes and things along Main Street that will eventually have to be addressed, but it's a step. And we have a good team in the town now that are aggressive about applying for, applying for grants, and I know that they'll be as aggressive as possible to try to get these grants, and maybe this money can come back. But this is simply the next step for us to continue to do our job to clean up our environment, clean the river, which is really one of the most polluted rivers around, believe it or not. And so, it's very important that we do this. We're polluting Duxbury's part of the bay as well as ours, and I think it's real important that we do this, and I think the timing of it. I know we have to raise and appropriate this money, but I, I believe that most of this or some of this will be coming back, and I, but even if it doesn't, it's, it's a necessary project, and I think it's our responsibility to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. No one really standing up contesting. It's up to you.
Just to add to that a little bit, in the initial reading, she mentioned that the Office of Coastal Zone Management worked with us on the design project for this. So, they brought their own specifications into this design project to make sure that it was gonna fit the requirements of their future grant programs. And in addition to that, it's the Department of Environmental Protection that is administering the other grant that we're applying for that has the forty percent match, and I was able to apply, not apply, but to provide an early draft to their program for review before the RFR opens. So, I was already able to get feedback from essentially both of the agencies that are administering these grants, and I feel that gives us a lot, you know, a lot better chance of getting these grants.
Thank you. This was, I didn't hear that, because I don't see anyone up, so I'm just gonna call for a vote. Board of Selectmen, four to one, Finance Committee, zero to four, somewhat abstained. All those in favor of passing Article twenty-five for funds for the Joan River cleanup, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries minimal opposition. Moving on to Article twenty-six.
Kyle Pike, Treasurer. This article looks a lot more complicated than I believe it is, or it needs to be. So, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of history, and then we'll make the motion. In two thousand and twenty, the town sought a, sought a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to replace the elementary school roof. Part of that was a request for nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to replace the rooftop air handling system. The grant itself for the total project was turned down, but the piece for the nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand was approved. At town meeting in May of two thousand and nineteen, we had authorized two hundred thousand dollars of free cash for this project. Article twelve, in August two thousand and twenty town meeting, authorized the full cost to be borrowed, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The long and short of it, the project is about done now. It has cost something over six hundred thousand dollars instead of nine hundred thousand. The mass grant has paid over three hundred thousand of it, and the town's cost will be over, just over three hundred thousand. We already have your authorization for two hundred thousand of free cash to be used. We're asking in this article for a hundred and five thousand of free cash to be the final funding basis of the project, and we're not going to have to borrow a nickel. I think it's important that we recognize that we're spending a hundred and five, we're asking for the use of a hundred and five thousand of free cash, but that we're not borrowing anything on the project. Therefore, now with that kind of, I hope, basic understanding, we move the town authorize the town capital project fund to reimburse the general fund borrowing of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that was, of four hundred and fourteen, that was used to fund the town's cost share of an elementary school rooftop heating units project. This is a technicality. We had to, in effect, do an internal borrowing to fund the project while we were waiting to see where it was going. And further, that the town transfer from free cash the use of an additional hundred and five thousand dollars to cover the final total net town cost within the issuance of any law, without the issuance of any long or short-term debt. And further, that the town rescind the borrowing authorization for the purpose of funding the town's cost share of the Massachusetts School Building Authority approved elementary school rooftop heating units project in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars as approved under Article twelve of the warrant at the August eighth, two thousand and twenty annual town meeting.
Any debate? Seeing none. Favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee, five zero, respectively both. All those in favor of passing Article twenty-six as stated in the article warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Believe we did twenty-seven, so we're on to twenty-eight. Who's presenting? Who's presenting?
I was asked, do I just move? Read this and then move.
Move.
Well, you can read it off.
Just move. No, no, no.
Just the motion.
Read the motion. Move.
Okay. Move the town authorized the repurposing of unused funds received by the Conservation Department towards the protection of natural resources at and improving accessibility to Camp Negan.
Now, read the description. Now, you can.
In 2008, the Conservation Department received a large grant from USDA NRCS. I apologize, I don't know what that stands for. For restoration work involving the stream complex at Cranberry Watershed Preservation, a conservation area off Grove Street. After the first round of funding was distributed, NRCS changed policies to no longer deal with municipalities and terminated the contract. They stated that they would not seek the return of the funds already distributed. Since 2016, we have had nearly $9,000 sitting untouched in the account set up for the grant, unable to be used without repurposing the funds. Camp Negan has been highlighted as the priority conservation area needing attention due to the high ecological significance of the habitats found there and the extreme amount of improper use the site has been exposed to. This funding will be used to support our efforts to keep off-road vehicles out, curb improper uses, and fix the effects of improper uses, prevent runoff into aquatic habitats, and fix the extremely damaged main trail network.
Open for debate? Seeing none. Favorable Board of Selectmen, five zero. Favorable to the Finance Committee, four to zero. All those in favor of passage of Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Emily Davis, 24 Clifton Drive. I'm here on behalf of Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Move that the town pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half, to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund for the Silver Lake Regional School District.
Second.
And so I think addressing an earlier question about funding for school-related projects for the Silver Lake Regional District, establishing this fund, we're not asking to fund it right now, we're just asking for the establishment of the fund, would allow the school district to start to think forward to some of our larger capital projects that we have and begin to fund those internally as opposed to having to come here each year to fund some of these larger capital expenses that we know are coming. We know that we have the administration building, we know we have equipment, grounds, and maintenance of our facilities that we need to fund in the next five years.
Open for debate?
Just a question.
Question.
Do the other two communities support it?
Plimpton has not yet voted on it. Halifax did not support it at this time. We are hoping that we will support it here in Kingston and that it will be voted favorably upon in Plimpton as well, and we can go back to Halifax with those votes.
Okay. This one only requires two out of the three communities, is that correct?
In, it requires all three.
Okay.
For us to actually establish the fund.
No. I believe it requires two-thirds of the towns and it's a majority vote at town meeting.
Yeah.
Yep. Two-thirds of the towns. So upon majority vote of all the members of the regional school district school committee and with the approval of a majority of the local appropriating authorities, the majority.
That is not how we understood it. So yes, we would then, so Halifax did not vote on it. Halifax did not vote favorably. We are hopeful that Plimpton will and we are hopeful that you all will so that we can start thinking forward because we also have some significant capital planning that needs to happen for the Silver Lake Regional School District.
Thank you for that clarification.
Favorable Board of Selectmen, five zero. Favorable by the Finance Committee, five zero. Seeing no one at the microphones. Move Article 29. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. No opposition. Moving on to Article 30, request to sell town-owned land.
So that is Sheila Vaughn, and I'm just going to make my motion. Move the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey property located on Route 44, shown as Assessor's Map 96, Parcel 7, for such consideration and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town, and to take such additional actions as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said property. The administration has been approached from a party interested in purchasing 3.2 acres parcel of town property with frontage to Route 44. Below is the map as to where the property is located in your packet. As you can see, the abiding properties are all owned by the same entity. All department heads indicated that there is no interest in retaining the property and its surplus. If this article passes, the property will be sold by competitive bid. I am the Selectman that did say yes to this. If you had gone to any of our meetings, you would have, they did come out to discuss with us. It would be like an agricultural school with agricultural land. If it was to go to this actual person who was looking for it, it would go out to competitive bid, but when they did come to us, it would have been an agricultural school and it went through the cardinal pushing, school, which, as everybody knows, is a wonderful school, but it's really a labor of love from the person that wants to build it. And so I am in favor of this, to be able to build this school.
It's not, building a school, is it?
Well, it's a cranberry, but it's, it's, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's a cranberry, but it's an agricultural piece of it.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify. So, open this up. Yes, ma'am.
Megan Hickey, 42 Winthrop Street. Also, just a point of order that it said all department heads have cleared this land. It has not cleared the Conservation Department or our department head at all. We haven't had access to this land as a Conservation Department or our agent. It was once a top priority habitat for a box turtle habitat that has not been reviewed. Also, I have a few issues with this handout that I, if anyone can answer.
The handout I saw when I came in today.
Well, the first article, the first line, it says, "Warrant articles are often complicated, divisive, and key to the implementation of town master plan." When people throw their master plan around, it gets people really nervous. I would actually love to know how this ties into the town's master plan somehow.
Whoever put this article, this piece of paper outside, it wasn't previously reviewed by me. Factually, I don't know if it's correct.
It is not.
I've never seen it. So someone produced this. I was kind enough to say, whatever you want on the table, because there was other people there. So I don't know, it wasn't fact-checked by me, it wasn't fact-checked by the Board of Selectmen.
Which concerns me greatly, because these people are reading this to base their information off and their decision off of. Also, it says, "Recent issues with the proposed Winthrop Street and Rocky Nook." The issue was the Rocky Nook didn't pass conservation. It wasn't an issue with us not wanting it or anything, and same with Winthrop. Those aren't issues, they weren't, they just weren't passed.
Again, I'm saying, I'm not, I saw that here this morning. It was passed out factually. I don't know if anyone, if the Board of Selectmen, if any Finance Committee, no one's reviewed it. So you can take that piece of paper for whatever you think it's worth.
Right, but that's the problem. Everyone is reading this and trying to make a sound decision by reading this fact sheet that could not be facts. And it also says that, however, the excavation will comply strictly with the town's earth removal bylaw and will not impact the water table. My question is, is it our old bylaws or is it gonna, the bylaw that they're trying to The sheet is wrong. The sheet needs to be thrown out, fact-checked. This information should not be.
I don't disagree with you.
So now people have wrong information and they're going to make the wrong decision.
That's why you're speaking here right now, ma'am. You've just clarified for the record what's in the paper.
No, I've given you my opinion.
Okay.
On that these are not facts. That's why I would like, who put this out? Nobody knows? This is just like a mystery paper that showed up out of nowhere?
That's what I'm saying.
How does that even make sense? So I can make a fact sheet about plastic bag ban, how it's great and it's this and then that. Nobody's going to check this information?
I understand that, but I can't police the entire building, checking people in here. Somebody was outside handing this in. I got a copy of it, it was too late to do anything about it. So I guess it's on me, I should be at the front door seeing what happens.
Okay, well now it's on me to let everybody know that these are not facts.
And that's what you're doing, ma'am, and I appreciate it. I agree. I just said, it hasn't been fact-checked. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Calder, for Village Path. I know the proponent for this project extremely well. I am aware of this letter, I helped write it. So let me clarify some of the questions, if I may. The Heritage Foundation took this off their list of endangered species after they did their research. This is no, it was on the list of endangered species, it's now off the list. They took it off the list. They did, may I finish, please?
Don't interrupt, please. Let him speak, you'll have your time, ma'am.
They did the survey, they did the research, they took it off the endangered species list. The article, the part about complying with the town meeting bylaw, of course, is considering the bylaws that are in place today. We're not gonna, they're not going to, and I'm not going to have to consider articles that have not yet been passed by this body. In terms of the water table, they have hired an engineer that will do, that has done preliminary engineering to ensure this doesn't impact the water table at all. The issue was raised about transportation of any material removed to build this bog for developmentally disabled children. The material that will be removed will not leave the site. It'll go from one side of the own property to the other side of the own property. So I, I, I don't want to get into the project in great detail, or I'd love to if you ask us to, because it is such a noble project. But the vote here is, does the town want to sell a piece of surplus property that is landlocked on three sides by the owner of the bog and by the other side by Route 44? That's the question before the body. If asked about the project as to why they want to buy this small parcel of land that's in the corner of this larger 50-acre site, it's because in speaking with citizens, they asked that the developer put the bog as far away from Indian Pond as possible and closer to Route 44. The project can go on without the purchase of this property. Their request for us to buy this property is a result of the interest in moving the bog away from Indian Pond. And so they're complying with that. If the town wants to sell it, then they can move this bog further away from Indian Pond. If the town doesn't sell it, then they will comply strictly with every bylaw the town has. This is a project that is designed as a family legacy to build an organic cranberry farm and to populate that farm with well-paid workers that come from the developmentally delayed community. It's a family legacy project. That's what this is about. In terms of environmental impacts, there are none. And for anybody to state that there are some, haven't done their research. There are no environmental impacts related to this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think the Finance Committee would like to address, I'll get to you, ma'am.
Is this my pot? No. No. Is it on? Okay. Hi, I just want to let everybody know that Finance Committee, we took this vote this morning and we revoted at one for yes, and the rest was opposed. Jerry can explain the yes vote in a moment. I'll just explain the no votes to summarize it, is that we later found out that the Conservation Committee may have interest in this. We thought, so that was interesting. And then there was also brought up that potentially there's future revenue that could be had by Billboard because it does front 44. It hasn't been looked at, but it was something that had, was brought up.
Sure. Hi. I just have had past experience with the person that's interested in purchasing this land. And I used to be the chair of the Cemetery Committee for St. Joseph's, and we were pretty much at a standstill, running out of funds. And this gentleman came out of nowhere and donated tens of thousands of dollars worth of soil and loam so we could finish that project and create another avenue of revenue for the church. And he didn't have to do that. That's pretty much all I have had experience. I asked Bob Comedy, guys who know him, and this guy's word is good, as far as I'm concerned. And if he says he's going to build a school for the handicap, I believe him. And I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, my issue isn't with the project, it's with the process. Also, I'd like to know when that land was not, I lose my train of thought here, when it was unclassified as natural priority habitat, because Conservation Commission hasn't been notified. It's kind of a big issue here.
Can anyone address that? Can you step up to the microphone?
My name's Ian, Ian Norrie, and I'm one of the ones behind this project. In August of last year is when that came out of Natural Heritage. They did an inspection out there and the endangered list species, they had said that the ones that were recorded were no longer on the list and there was no evidence of anything being there. I have done my research.
Hold on, we got one question. While you're there, sir.
Why are you here? This piece of property appears to, I'm sorry.
How could they do a study on that? Without our knowledge?
Just for curiosity, this piece of property appears to be landlocked. Do you have access granted from the owner that surrounds the property to get to it? You do? You have? I have to get a bunch of the parcel that I have, all the three sides, it's locked in.
Can you speak into the microphone? I know you're looking at him.
So you own the property that abuts it? Yes. Okay.
Yes, I do.
Can I ask a question? Could you mention the study? I'm sorry for the folks that are lining up there, but you just said that you did, had a study done on that piece of property and as a result, there was a change in the endangered species, but we own that property. How did you conduct that study? How is that even possible?
I didn't have the study done. The state did it on their own, and as far as the property that you have.
But who, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm agitated about that. Who contacted the state to come out and do that without our knowledge? And we're hearing that our Conservation Commission has no idea what's going on out there. This is crazy.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sir, come on up.
So rare enlisted species issues are dealt with by the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. What they do is they take records of rare species and they track them through their GIS. And every, I believe it's 25 years, they have to, maybe 15, they have to reaffirm those records. I've been with some of these biologists when they do that. Essentially, they're going to show up on the site and look around for the species of record, whatever it is. If they don't find anything, they don't find any evidence of it, then they will mark that as no longer, you know, as that species no longer being at that site. They maintain what's called the priority habitat layer in GIS, and that's what's used as sort of the regulatory tool for whether you have rare species on your property or not. They have a policy where they do not expand that land area at all. So when they need to add to a priority habitat parcel for a rare species somewhere, they're essentially taking it away from someplace else. And that's why they go through every 15 to 25 years, and if something isn't updated or they don't find it, they remove that. So this past review, as Ian said, in, I believe it was August of last year, the entirety of that area, all 50-plus acres over there were in priority habitat, and as of that revision, it was pulled back to about 100 feet away from Indian Pond. So the entire area was pulled out of priority habitat. In my personal opinion, I don't think that means, I don't know exactly what species they were looking for. I use box turtle as my expectation based on the habitat. Box turtles are hard to find, so it wouldn't surprise me if they came and looked for box turtles, couldn't find any, and somebody felt comfortable taking that area off the list. One of the things with private property is, you don't get a lot of records. If it's a state property or a town property, people visit it a lot for hiking and whatnot, and they will see rare species and record them with the state. That doesn't often happen on private property. So it's my personal opinion that it may have been premature for them to remove rare species designation from that area. But again, they chose to do that, and that's how the process works.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Anthony Romano, 7 Silver Lake Drive. I can appreciate wanting to build a bog and have a school for the disabled, but I do think if our Conservation Agent and our Conservation Commission has not been able to go out there and vet this property, I don't think this Article 30 should even be on the table. be on the table. That being said, the Board of Selectmen had an unfavorable vote towards it. Could one of you tell us why? Seems maybe you know more than we do. Thank you.
Well, I think you all covered it fairly well. So, the conservation piece felt premature, I wanted more, they objected in our meeting, so we, well, the conservation agent, I suppose, objected to the project potentially in our meeting, felt a little unsure of what was being said, and, and as, as they said in the beginning, they don't need our property to pursue the project. So, I guess they don't need the property. That's the way I looked at it.
Sir?
Yes, Bob Carmody, 556 Elm Street, Kingston. I live on Indian Pond, and I have all kinds of different entities that call or knock on the door to come and do acid tests on the pond, look for flowers that are 100 years old. It's quite common for them to reach out, and rightly so, they're looking at our environment, making sure things are safe. I've dealt with the Norries as neighbors for 40 years. They stand up when, when we were trying to fix St. Joseph Cemetery. I went to everybody, Fug Edwards, this guy, that guy, nobody would help us. Mr. Norrie came up with $40,000 worth of material, and, and now because of that, they've sold a lot of plots, and, and St. Joseph's out of the black. The other thing I want to inform you is that this land that you're talking about that's landlocking it, the town of Cisco Foods tried to give it to the town, and the town would not take it. Okay? So it seems kind of crazy, they don't take that land, but yet we're going to hold on to a little piece? It's crazy. What he's trying to do, and what he's saying in that paperwork, is that he's going to build a school for handicapped kids. And every bog, anytime they took any sand out of an area, they put a bog in it. John owns so many bogs, he, he's one of the good people. And to hold them back, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Dorothy Patricia Hollow, Three Pebble Lane, Kingston, Massachusetts. And I'll have to say to this young woman, as my husband would say, persistence and consistency get you someplace. And I think she just gave a fabulous example of that. But getting back to the 3.9 acres of land that you're discussing, the accessibility has been answered today, it's accessible. My question to you would be, what is the price of that land right now? And what would be the price of the land to the town if you were to remove soil from it? I mean, if you, I'm sorry? Mr. Coulter, did you say something? Okay. Okay, well, what would be the eventual cost to the town if they kept the property, didn't sell it, but sold the soil? Not a good idea, but it's a better idea than just giving it away, or not giving it away at all.
Can anyone answer the price of the soil on the land that's owned by the town?
Like, the example that was just given, St. Joseph's received like $40,000 worth of soil?
Yeah, I, I don't know how many yards or truckloads or...
I know, but that's part of the whole equation. I'm just stating that selling...
Can anyone address that?
Pardon?
I'm seeing if anyone can address your question, ma'am, and...
I want to know, the assessed value of the land was, I believe, $100,000.
But I...
So we have an assessed value of the land of $100,000, and this gentleman might have some information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To answer your question...
Can you just identify yourself?
Ian Norrie.
Oh, no, to the microphone.
In the microphone.
Ian Norrie, I was just up here a minute ago. And to answer your question better, it would have to be done with the engineering and the amount of yardage that would come out of there to create this project. We would pay a fee back to the town if we acquired it. Say 50 cents a yard, or something like that, if that, it's hard to say right now, and not with the engineer being done.
Plus purchasing the land per se?
Yes. That would be added on to the purchase price.
Okay, until that actually happens, no one knows what, what it would be, but thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Just, not quite, quite a point of order, Mr. Moderator, but just a statement to the body. We're a town that is, is governed by bylaws. And when a proponent comes before the town and meets every one of the bylaws, I question whether it's really up to the opinion of a few people, and I don't mean the body, I mean the Conservation Commission, as to whether something is worthy or not. You can only ask that our citizens follow the bylaws, the laws that are put in place for us to comply with. And this proponent, as you've heard speakers say, is one of the most high-integrity people I've ever known. They will comply with every single bylaw. If the heritage folks had not declassified this, they wouldn't have even tried, wouldn't even thought of developing this type of entrepreneurial or philanthropic project. But with those actions, and with the bylaws of this community, there's a straight path to building a philanthropic project that is an organic farm, which is what people want, and a philanthropic educational vocational program for developmentally disabled children. I just, I struggle when I hear people on boards who disregard our own bylaws and say, "Well, it's my opinion, it shouldn't happen." If our elected and appointed members aren't going to support our bylaws, why would we, why would we expect our citizens to support the bylaws, which are the guidelines that the town gives us to operate under? That's a question for us all to ponder. This is a very, very worthy project that everybody in this town can be so proud of. And we, and I assure you, they will do it in compliance...
Hold on, we got a point of order. Yes, what is your point of order?
When we were in our meeting, I believe that we were supposed to have an agricultural restriction on this, on this...
Great point.
On this motion. I have it in my notes that we were supposed to modify this to say that we would have an agricultural deed restriction on the warrant, and we would talk to legal counsel about amending the agricultural restriction.
That is 100% correct.
Someone has to make a motion to amend.
Can I make a motion to amend? My...
Yeah, it has to be, can someone write it up?
Mr. Moderator, I'll close my remarks by saying, when I was approached by the Norrie family, who I've known for a very, very long time, they competed to buy this property by, from, with a developer that wanted to build affordable housing on those 50 acres. They outbid them so that they could do this project and avoid that affordable housing. And this action, as I said earlier, is only in consideration of our friends in the environmental community, who asked us if we'll move the project further away from Silver Lake and closest to Route 44. Pardon me, Indian Pond, thank you, pardon. Further away from Indian Pond and closer to Route 44. That is the reason they will be bidding to buy this property, once again, to comply with and to accommodate the wishes of the citizens of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mind if I go forward with the motion? We have a motion to amend Article 30, please.
Thank you. Move to amend to convey the property subject to a binding agricultural restriction which will run with the land.
Do you have a second? Would you like to be heard?
I just wanted to cover that, the fact that I, I'm an extreme note taker, and so at, at my, at the meeting, I do remember having this conversation, I would like to say thank you, Jim Franklin, I believe he brought this up, actually. And so that is a big point of interest for myself as well, that I believe that we did say that it needed to have an agricultural restriction, and we had much discussion on this to make sure of that.
Okay, would anyone, I know there's people standing, but would anyone like to be heard on the motion to amend? Seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of amending Article 30 as stated on the record 30 seconds ago, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment carries with minimal opposition.
Thank you.
Now, sir, you're up.
Okay. I, I do think this would be a great project, I don't have anything against it. But there's two things that I heard tonight. One is, we might be able to make money with it as a town that will go on forever, that hasn't been looked at. The other thing is, is Mr. Coulter said, "No material's going to come out of there," and then the gentleman says, "He's going to pay us for so much per yard as he takes it out." So I'm a little confused, is, is this land going to be mined? Or is it not going to be mined? It's, it's either one or the other. And so, I would like to know that, and, because I personally think that Kingston's done its part as far as land removal, and earth removal. Half the town is missing, we got no more hills left. So, I, I, I don't think it's a bad project, but I would like us to do our due diligence for the selectmen, anybody else. Is that a piece of property we might need for solar? Is that a piece of property we might need for advertisement that we need money for? And then if not, we sell it to the gentleman, and they can do their project. But I would like us to do our diligence before we make any rash decisions. And I also think that this should have gone to Conservation before it came here.
Thank you. Do you know the answer to that question?
First of all, it's not required to go to Conservation before it comes to town meeting. Again, we're following the bylaws of the town. The answer to the question is, the Norrie family own Plimpton Sand and Gravel, which this sand, this land abuts. What was meant by the comment, "It's not moving the property, it's going from Norrie property to Norrie property, and it's never touching town-owned lands." Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Lorraine Bergeo, 42 Winthrop. My first shot out of the gate is, I dislike it when people dismiss duly-elected and appointed commissioners on any board. They're there as an advisory capacity, they're there to set rules, and to diminish their role in the overall health of this town is really a very, very bad thing. Second of all, if there's a study, as the gentleman said, you said you did a study? Yeah. Did he, did, was it provided to any department, any board, any commission? Did he share that information? Does anybody know?
Is that all your comments? I'll, I'll have him come up, is there anything else?
Yeah, that's enough. I'm up for enough, I'm done.
Okay. Did you share your findings with any of the Board of Selectmen's, Health Department, anyone in Kingston?
Why?
All right, we're not, we're not going to cross-examine him.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You can ask me the question.
Okay, does he know why?
Okay. So you want to know why?
Yeah, is there a reason why he did not share that?
Come on back up. Melissa, stay up here.
I don't mean to be mean. Shoot me now.
To answer the question, I wasn't asked that question at the time. It was brought up today, but I know that in August of last year, the study was done, and there was nothing found.
Okay, would you be willing to share that with Conservation?
I, I have a photo on my phone, if you would like to see it.
I'm asking you, would you be willing to share that survey with Conservation, not look at a photo of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that maintained by the state? That study? So that'd be available, well, I'm sure Conservation might know behind you, if that would be available at the state for Conservation to find?
Okay.
Does that answer your questions, ma'am?
For the time being, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we go forward, just new information now?
I have new information.
Thank you.
My other concern, Megan Hickey, 42 Winthrop Street, also a Conservation Commissioner. And to be disregarded, my personal opinion or not, it's pretty offensive. Also, we should not be voting on projects because of the personal integrity of one of the parties, because that just is not a good way to base things off projects. Also, I was informed, before this meeting started, that this project will not pass our new earth removal bylaw if our new bylaw is passed. So for all this talk about bylaws and upkeeping bylaws and conservation, we sit on the Conservation Department because we are passionate about conservation and environment, and the effects that this will have. But to know that a project will not pass a possible new bylaw is a major issue, and a glaring issue, and the fact that we're getting opposing information, and we're handed a incorrect fact sheet, should be a cause for alarm for a project like this. That's all.
Thank you. Sir?
Jim Franklin, 53 Winthrop Street, I am Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, Chairman of the Open Space Committee. It was my recommendation, so I sat in on the Selectmen's meeting, where this was first presented, kind of very late in the process, I think. You know, on face value, you know, I think that, you know, the, the gentleman who's looking to maybe purchase this property, you know, I mean, it sounds like a really good thing, right? But the truth is, is that there's no guarantees in this life, right? So if the gentleman decides to sell off the land after he, he mines it, or after he buys this particular parcel, and then applies and receives permits and mines this land down to, you know, within 10 feet of the, the, the water table, that ultimately, this, this project could go any direction after that. There's no guarantees, right? There's no stipulations, there's no legal binding agreements. So I think what we really need to consider here is that we have three acres' worth of habitat that could be maintained, whether or not we think the project is a good one. The project can move forward without this parcel, they were very clear in that. I support, you know, if, if, you know, the end goal is what you're saying it is, I support, you know, that type of facility. However, at any point in time, we can come back and decide that, hey, look, you did everything that you said you were going to do, and we can decide to sell this land, right? Right now, if we let it go, then we don't have any say in, in the, in the final product. So I think it's important that we just understand that what we're voting on today is either the town's going to be complicit in extra sand removal, extra excavation as part of this project, or we're going to say, hey, look, you know what, you can do your project, you, you, you got laws that you have to stick by, you know, we trust in our, in our elected officials to, to do their jobs in the permanent process, but at the end of it, you know, we don't actually need to commit this land to, you know, your end goal until we feel a little bit better about it. So I, I would, I would recommend voting, you know, your hearts on this one, and, and deciding that either we know that this is a good idea, we know it for a fact right now, or we don't, and we just vote accordingly, so.
Last response, then we're going to take it to a vote.
Okay, I just want to clarify a few things as I've been listening to this. The statement why it wasn't Conservation notified of this wasn't on the proponents, it's not their responsibility, that it, they may bid on it if it becomes surplus property. And the statement in here says, "All department heads indicated there's no interest in retaining the property in its surplus." The town puts this book out. Whoever may be interested in this property did not. The motion, there is a motion on the table that's been approved, that it's agricultural land. So even if you go and remove whatever soils may be needed, if it's sold, it would be for agricultural use. Third, if I've, if I heard conversations in the past, in order to do an organic cranberry bog, it needs to be on virgin soil. So this cannot be shifted to another area that this interested party to, to create a bog on other land owned by the party. It needs to be on virgin land to be an organic cranberry bog. So just, and to go back to the original motion, it's to sell the land, and now with an agricultural restriction.
Thank you. Sir, if you have something new?
I have a question, I just wanted to ask, what's the flexibility of the selectmen if you feel that the terms of, you know, that are offered are not in the best interest of the town? Can you simply not sell if we vote yes on this?
Can you state your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Johnson, 5 Summer Street.
There would be, I just reread the motion, and the Board of Selectmen would have significant discretion to not approve the sale.
So we could vote yes, and then the selectmen could make their own decision, basically, on what happens?
As it's written, according to Town Council.
Thank you.
Not me. All right, this was a vote by the Board of Selectmen, was 1-3-1. Finance Committee revoked this, it was one in favor, three opposed. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor for the request to sell town-owned land, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Counters? Please. If you're in favor of the town selling the town-owned land, as referenced in Article 30, as amended, please hold up your purple cards so it can be counted. Mr. Ruda? If you're opposed to the town selling town-owned land, could you take out your purple cards I have 37 opposed, 62 for. My math is that the article fails. Moving on to Article 31, Kingston Single Use Plastic Bag Bylaw. You ready?
I am.
Let's go.
Okay. Move, the town amend its general bylaws by adding Chapter 26, Kingston Single Use Bag Bylaw, as printed in the warrant.
Well, I can't hear you, ma'am.
Well, you are.
But we already called the article, so we can do one after if she'd like. No one's questioned quorum up to date, so everything that's been passed, if there's two people here, it's good. So, unless someone calls it out, not everyone has to vote, so. We started with the quorum, no one's questioned quorum. As the rules dictate, if quorum's not called for, before a motion is called, the motion That's okay.
Oh, okay.
So, you're not making a motion or anything like that? Okay. Go ahead.
We're ready. Okay. It's afternoon, I think. I'm Jean Landis-Nom, and Chairman of the Recycling Committee, and I'm here today to ask you to remove single-use plastic bags from all retail locations in town. The purpose of this bylaw is to eliminate these bags because they are detrimental to our health as well as to the environment. And you're asking, why do you think this is a good idea? In your town meeting packet, there's information in the warrant article and supplemental information that details some of the environmental hazards. By polluting our coastal waters with plastic bags, we harm ourselves and all living things on land and in the ocean, and we're especially sensitive to the impact this has on our aquaculture industry and the products they ship to other communities. This morning, I was presented by a town meeting member with something they found floating in Jones River yesterday. It's a plastic bag. While there are many products made for recycled plastic, and recycling plastic bags can help to prevent the problems associated with plastic, the sad truth is that only 1% to 5% of the plastic bags that are manufactured get recycled. This isn't just because of carelessness on the part of the consumer, because many recycling facilities don't possess the capacity to recycle plastic bags, because they contain high-density prophylane, and it's often cheaper to make new plastic bags than to recycle an old one. What we are encouraging residents to do is to use reusable shopping bags. Recycling Committee has been committed to this for the last four years. We've used grant money to purchase and distribute 5,550 reusable bags, and we plan to provide more in the future. Those of you who shop at Big Y and in any of the surrounding communities with plastic bag bans are already using reusable bags. Most reusable shopping bags are easily cleaned and can be used for several years. This bylaw also allows for the use of recycled paper bags, which come from a renewable source, which plastic is not, and must contain at least 40% post-consumer recycled paper. Managers of the local box stores have assured me that they have no problem converting from single-use plastic bags, as their companies have done so in nearly every other community on the South Shore. In addition, Wegmans, which is a large grocery line, recently announced they'll no longer offer single-use plastic bags this year. We've asked why we are addressing only these single-use plastic bags, because there's so many other environmental issues with other plastics. First, our group has discussed many of these hazards and consulted with other towns and regional and state experts to determine where best to dedicate our efforts. We truly wish we could address all the issues. However, many plastics and other hazards cannot be adequately addressed at the local level. Banning nip bottles requires the cooperation of all the liquor stores in town, a difficult task considering these are the real moneymakers for these stores. We know that while Massachusetts state legislators have been reluctant to pass a statewide ban on plastic bags, they are seriously considering producer responsibility legislation as well as an extended bottle bill to increase and extend the deposit of 10 cents to nip bottles as well as other single-use water and juice bottles. What we do locally is to ban the single-use plastic bags, just as 149 other cities and states in Massachusetts have done. This includes large cities like Boston, Worcester, and Springfield. We'll be number 150 if the ban is approved today. Eight states in the United States have passed statewide bans, while other states have outlawed such bans due to political philosophy. Unfortunately, that does nothing to improve the environment and our own health. As with smoking in public places, safety caps on household cleaners, and banning things like Freon and DTT, this is a regulation that strives to balance personal freedoms with the public good. Although bag bans won't solve the plastic crisis on their own, they do help to change plastic consumption habits and cause consumers and retailers to be more open to alternatives. Banning single-use plastic bags is a small but critical step towards tackling the plastic crisis. We believe the elimination of single-use plastic bags, averaging 365 bags per household in Kingston per year, would be the next step toward improving our environment. This bylaw has received support from the Board of Health, Recreation Commission, Agricultural Commission, Waterfront Committee, Conservation Agent and Assistant Conservation Agent, and the Conservation Commission. It's also received a favorable response from members of the Jones River watershed. We did receive a letter of support from the Sierra Club, and that was handed out in the lobby this morning. And there are over 200 representatives of environmental and community organizations in Massachusetts that support a plastic bag ban at the state level. It's important to note that the Board of Health voted unanimously to support this, as they will be the responsible party for working with the retailers and enforcing this bylaw. This bylaw would become effective six months after approval by the Attorney General, and retailers can request an extension if needed. We'd appreciate your vote in favor of banning the single-use plastic bags here in Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up for debate?
I'm the lawyer.
Yes.
I'm standing up.
Yes, it was. If not, do you second it? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Coolin House, 31 Howland Lane. One thing I encourage everybody to do is to look into the whole waste and recycling process, because I've learned that a lot of what we're doing with regard to recycling isn't beneficial to the environment. I oppose this, not because of the fact that I wanna see more trash in the streets, I definitely wanna clean the environment, but I believe the problem isn't with the plastic bags, but rather with the proper disposal of the plastic bags. My understanding is, using other forms, such as paper bags, requires a significant more energy input than into producing plastic bags in addition to recycling the paper, hauling it off, using fossil fuels to the recycling facility, using chemicals and other fossil fuel inputs to go and recycle the paper. So, personally, I oppose this for the reasons I stated. That being said, I think that we have a serious trash disposal problem in Kingston, along with the state, with people just disposing their trash right out their windows, leaving it on the street, and I pick it up every single day, literally thousands of pounds in the course of a year, and plastic bags are part of it, but everything I find, from nip bottles to paper bags to human feces, drugs, animal feces, so it goes down the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Me again. Megan Hickey, 42 Winthrop Street. I was actually, I'm on the Conservation Commission, I was one that voted no. My first concern is that, all right, let me also state that I'm on the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Commission. I'm also a land steward for the town of Kingston. I have walked 90% of our conservation areas in this town. The number-one litter is not plastic bags, it is nip bottles. And I understand that that is a bit different, that we're not talking about that, but that should be our main concern, and I understand that the business owners don't wanna comply, but there are other towns in this Massachusetts that have banned nip bottles completely. The problem is, if we're gonna be promoting paper bags, not reusable bags, that is not any more environmentally friendly than plastic bags. The plastic bag litter that we see is more shrink wrap, sandwich bags like we were shown, masks. We were also asking for information on possible recycling receptacles at the dump to make recycling of these materials easier for the residents. Not everyone goes to Stop &amp; Shop, not everyone goes to Big Y. People get Peapod, people get Amazon deliveries, so these people are not going back into a retail establishment to return their trash. They wanna bring it to the dump where they pay over $200 to do it. We were not given that information, so I voted no.
Thank you. I'll get you to respond at the end, there's only two more. I'll give you a chance. Yes, ma'am?
Pine de Bla, 93 Elm Street. Picker upper of litter, of all kinds of litter. I hate picking up litter. I'm a fan of this, and I'm a fan of it because we gotta start someplace. With us being 150 communities, that's a movement. We need a movement to do the education of our poorly, our poor upbringing, where we think throwing it out the car as we drive by at 95 miles an hour is the thing to do. We really do need this plastic bag ban in order to come up with recycled bamboo bags. I'm not saying we should cut down more trees and make more paper bags, for God's sake. No. We need to advance our society. We need to get better at our consumerism, and at our habits, and at our cleanliness, and taking care of the environment. Last October, when the, you know, big storm came through and uprooted all the trees and stuff, there were plastic bags in the root balls of these trees. We need to do better, and if you can't get over yourself and start somewhere, then we're gonna go down with the ship.
Thank you. Yes, sir, can you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Dr. Kenneth Stone. I'm from Plymouth. I was invited as a guest by Jean to speak.
Yes, sir.
Just a little background, I am on the Advisory Board of Sustainable Plymouth. I was on the Advisory Board of Mass Green Network, and I wrote the plastic bag ban in Plymouth, which passed unanimously 139 to 8 in our representative town meeting six years ago. There are 149 towns that have passed plastic bag bans. In response to some of what was said earlier, for the example of paper versus plastic, that's an argument that goes back and forth. There's one piece of research that suggested that paper bags were worse because of the upfront climate impact. There's a number of problems with that study, I won't bother to go into that and just, people, eyes would cross, but the fact is that, yeah, neither paper or plastic is great. Reusable bags are. We could go back and forth about which one is worse than the other, but the reality is that if one thing is better than another, that doesn't necessarily make it good, all right? So, paper bags, plastic bags, they both should go. Unfortunately, as a town, you cannot put a regulation on assigning a fee to paper bags, which is how they actually get cut down by 90% in places that are allowed to do that. So, there's lots of different ways to destroy the environment, and when you talk about, is this worth doing? Of course it is. Should we do nips too? Of course we should do nips. In Plymouth, we probably will, very shortly. There are five towns surrounding us that have done that. So, yeah, you have to chip away at the plastic waste in one way or another, and we do know that it is not just a problem with litter, but it's a problem with human health. And again, I could go into that, I don't think you really wanna hear all that. I wanna give you a statistic as to how many...
You can just start to wrap it up, sir.
All right. Let me give you a statistic as to how many plastic bags are leaving from your Stop &amp; Shop every day. The Mass Food Association, which is a major lobbying group for all markets in the state, including your Stop &amp; Shop, did a study between 2007 and 2012. This was part of their effort to get people to voluntarily reduce the use and go to reusable bags. They were very proud of their results. They got a 30% reduction in the number of bags. What were the numbers in that last year, 2012? The number of disposable bags handed out statewide, first off, by grocery stores, was 1 billion, that's with a B, 1,244,547,504. The average for a market was 2,662 in a year. Since we have put the ban in in Plymouth, there are no plastic bags on the street. I also happen to organize the town cleanups twice a year. This is effective legislation. It works, you should do it, and if you wanna get rid of nips as well, by all means, go forward with that. If you wanna deal with paper, try to get the state ban passed, which would have a fee attached to it. That's only gonna happen when you have a critical mass of the small towns. That's the way it works everywhere in the world, including, by the way, 40 nations worldwide.
Yes, sir. We gotta wrap it up, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Dorothy McFarlane, Wapping Road. And as an aside, many of you might have seen the lady who picked up Wapping Road, walking every day. I'm sorry to say, she passed away recently. She's gone. No, I'm sorry. But the thing about plastic bags is, they do not rot. They last for thousands of years, and we are a coastal community. The wind takes those things out into the ocean, and many animals eat them, mistaking them for a jellyfish or some other food that looks like a plastic bag, or they're eaten by accident by whales that just gulp huge amounts of water at a time. Once the stomachs of those critters are filled with plastic bags, they can no longer eat, and they die. Plastic bags are really a big menace to survival, to health of many animals. When they break up, which they do, they get abraded and they become these little microplastics things, and if you've been reading the literature lately, you find out that we now have microplastics in our bodies. What are they doing to us? We'll find out. But the thing is, about paper bags, yeah, they cost, they have an environmental cost, but they do rot. At least they disappear after a while. Plastic bags don't disappear, they just keep showing up again and again. One... Plastic bags don't disappear, they just keep showing up again and again, one time after another. And I will vote for this.
Thank you. One more, then we'll put this to a vote.
Amy Belmore, fifty-four Evergreen Street. I'll keep it short because she said most of what I just wanted to say about the impact of plastic bags on our sea mammals, sea turtles, sea birds, and fish. I think the costs to our aquatic life is really something we need to consider as a coastal community, and I absolutely think we need to be addressing the nip problem. But the reality is that these bags, the vast majority of them blow, as she said, and then float. And so I think that we need to really address the problem, and I also think that we can do more than one thing at the same time. We can address nips, and we can address plastic bags, and we can take responsibility for our actions and how we handle ourselves as consumers. So I support this, this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. This was voted on by the Board of Selectmen, and it was a two to three vote. You've said the support from the other departments in your presentation, so no need to repeat that. This is a majority vote. All those in, oh, you'd like to address something else? Sure, go ahead.
Concerns? Okay. The plastic bags from Peapod and Stop &amp; Shop that come, you know, to your home are not single-use plastic bags. They are a much heavier plastic bag that can be reused. That is not part of this bylaw. Having a container at the transfer station for people to put their single-use plastic bags will mean that the town will then have to have a separate vendor to collect them and dispose of them. The reason that Stop &amp; Shop has to have a bin is because they do distribute single-use plastic bags, so they're required by the state to offer within twenty feet of the entrance a container to recover those because they do, in fact, have a vendor that processes those for them. We are not promoting paper bags. We are promoting reusable bags. That is why we have, you know, when people say, you know, live your truth, we have bought and handed out over fifty-five hundred reusable bags because that's our focus. We don't want you to take the paper bags. We don't want you to use plastic bags. We want you to use reusable bags, and they can be cleaned. That's, I think that's all I have to say. This is a very important issue. Ask any of our aquaculture farmers, everything, all those microplastics that Dorothy was talking about, find their way into all the sea animals. And the latest statistic I've seen is that we as consumers, through our food and our drinks, consume enough plastic each week to make up a credit card. That's an enormous amount of plastic to have in the human body. And as Dorothy said, we have no idea what that's going to impact, is going to be. I'm all done.
Thank you. Real, real quick.
Yeah, real quick, I just forgot to share one statistic. According to the Ocean Conservancy, plastic bags and plastic utensils are the second worst source of ocean trash, second only to fishing gear. So it's a large, large volume.
Thank you. Let's move this through a vote. All, so Board of Selectmen, it was a not favorable, two to three. It's a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thirty-two?
Oh, explain. Go ahead. Count on the what? Somebody, have a form down.
Who, hello? Who?
Is this guy here? The one in the blue shirt next to the guy that-
Where's the person who wanted a count? So we need a quorum to start, we need a quorum to vote for certain items. Once those certain items have been voted for, the remaining items that are on the, the remaining articles don't require a quorum of a hundred. It's okay. Article thirty-two?
I am.
Have quiet, please. Let's get, trying to get through this. A lot of people have been sitting here for five hours.
Move the town amend its general bylaws by amending Chapter thirteen, Community Preservation Committee bylaw as printed in the warrant. This amendment would allow the appointment of a housing representative to the CPC from either the Kingston Housing Authority or the Kingston Affordable Housing Trust. The Kingston CPC bylaw adopted in Kingston, in town, by town meeting in two thousand five and was amended in two thousand six and two thousand eleven specifies the composition of the committee. Housing is represented in that bylaw by the Housing Authority. This bylaw predates the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust in two thousand fourteen and the bylaw in two thousand sixteen. Until two thousand twenty-one, this position was filled by a member of the Kingston Housing Authority who has resigned, and there has been no representative of housing on the CPC since two thousand twenty-one. The Kingston Housing Authority is down one member, and we, we understand they're, they're struggling. We believe it's critical to have a representative of housing on the CPC as they engage in their yearly evaluation of applications. Affordable Housing Trust currently has five appointed members and is prepared to appoint a representative if no member of the Housing Authority volunteers, so that the full complement of representatives can conduct the business of the CPC. This change to the CPC bylaw will provide more options for a housing representative to serve on the CPC.
Would you like to be, no, second, okay. So this was, seeing no debate, this was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, four to zero. Is a majority vote. All those in favor of passing Article thirty-two as explained, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thirty-three, I told you we'd get to you. You have thirty-three?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Valerie Massard, Town Planner and resident at One Schofield. In working with the town over, over the last couple of months, we've had a lot of discussion over earth removal projects, both past and potential in the future. And in looking at our bylaw, we found that it's been a while since we revisited it and that there's really a couple of things we're trying to do here. Most specifically is we're, we're looking to say that the earth removal bylaws should be both incidental and necessary to the proposed use. There's always an end use, that, that wouldn't change. There was always a use that was, had to be shown at the end. But what we found is sometimes that use doesn't appear. And so the goal here would be to ask that whoever has that end use in mind, please have those permits in the process or in hand when they come and say, now I'm ready to take that earth from the town. And in addition to that, we're asking for a little bit more information with that filing with respect to how we set up the review, that the review would be on an annual basis, which that's already there, but that would include a recommendation from whoever is inspecting the project and be done during a public meeting. We're also looking for people to give us a little bit more information about how they intend to restore and landscape the property and to have a security that allows us to be able to stabilize the site.
Can you just, at the bottom, just read the move that the town amended the general bylaws, right at the bottom?
Yep, sorry. So I moved that the town amend its general bylaws by amending Chapter twelve, Earth Removal Bylaw as printed in the warrant.
Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing no one. It is a favorable by the Board of Selectmen, four to zero, and the Planning Board, three to zero. All those in favor of the amendment to the general bylaws as printed in Article thirty-three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion? Motion passive with minimal opposition. Thirty-four?
Move the town amend its general bylaws by amending Chapter fourteen, Agricultural Commission bylaw as printed in the warrant. The current bylaw for the Agricultural Commission requires that a member of the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a non-voting associate member. In the event that no Selectman is interested in this appointment, it leaves one seat vacant on the Agricultural Commission. This change to the bylaw allows the Board of Selectmen, which is the appointing authority for the commission, to appoint one of their members or another citizen to the Agricultural Commission so that they're operating with a full committee. This provides the Board of Selectmen some flexibility in appointing members to the Agricultural Commission. And I hope you were, you got the newest thing off the press, our new brochure for the Agricultural Commission. Thank you.
And this was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing nobody. All those in favor of the amendment to general bylaw, Chapter four, as printed in Article thirty-four, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to thirty-five.
Move the town accept the provisions of MGL Chapter fifty-nine, Section five N, in order to authorize Kingston to establish a program to allow veterans to volunteer to provide services in exchange for a reduction in the real property tax obligations of that veteran on the veteran's tax bills, which reduction shall be in addition to any exemption or abatement which that person is otherwise entitled, in addition allowing an approved representative for persons physically unable to provide such services to the town. So as was described in the motion, the article will help Kingston veterans to allow them to meet a portion of their local real property tax obligations through volunteer work-off programs similar to what we have for the seniors.
It was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, five zero. Open it for debate, if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing no movement, I move for a vote on Article thirty-five, as just read. All those in favor to adopt MGL Chapter fifty-nine, Section five N, as printed in Article thirty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to thirty-six.
Thirty-six, I do not believe is being moved.
No motion. No one's moving thirty-six, so it doesn't exist. I know. Thirty, oh, I'm not going to forget thirty-seven. Thirty-seven. You're busy today.
Okay. Move the town amend its general bylaws, Chapter five, Article three, Dealers in Precious Metals Amendment as printed in the warrant. The proposed changes to the description of precious metals recognizes the different types of metals, their respective markets, and to allow for appropriate holding periods. They also reflect the risk of dealing with possible stolen items. Numismatic or collectible coins, such as currency, gold, and silver ingots or bars, are intended to be sold and resold. They are accepted investment products. The value of precious metal coins and ingots changes many times each day based on the fluctuations in the commodities markets. Sellers and buyers must make transactions in a timely manner to avoid a potential loss in value. There is a, a handout in your, in your booklet here. And I'm now going to turn this presentation over to David Pepe.
Good afternoon, sir. State your name, please. I'm David Pepe. I, I got my notes. I'm going to keep it short and simple, hopefully, so we can get out of here, enjoy the day. My name's David Pepe. I resided in Kingston for twenty-nine years prior to my recent move to Plymouth just over a year ago. I am the owner of Pilgrim Coin and Currency in Waymouth. I have been a precious metal and rare coin business dealer full-time for the past twenty-six years. I am in the process of changing my business from a retail storefront to an appointment-only office, potentially here in Kingston, to specialize in rare coins and precious metals. This change will probably take a year or two to accomplish. As the town bylaw on precious metals currently stands, I nor anyone else who deals with these type of commodities would want to operate in Kingston due to the extended holding period of thirty days for all forms of precious metals. The handout you received when you came to town meeting contains the current bylaw as well as all the changes being provoked, proposed. I will highlight these changes. First and the most significant change is the definition of precious metals. Currently, the town bylaw makes no difference between jewelry, collectible coins, or investment metals. The proposed definitions recognize the different types of metals, how they are traded, and the potential risk of them being stolen. Most collections and investment products are stored in a secure location by the owner and are, and are at a much lower risk of theft, reducing the need for an extended holding period. Most coins and precious metals are generic in nature and have no distinguishing characteristics to help identifying, to help identify the owner, rendering an extended holding period unnecessary. This change would not affect the holding period for jewelry and other household items such as silver flatware that is more subject to theft and is more identifiable. It is also unlikely that thieves would conduct business with a company that is going to get a photo ID and write them a check. They have other places they can sell items for cash and do not have to show any form of ownership. Additionally, the cost and exposure to a volatile metals market would not allow a dealer to pay fair market prices to an investor when the time comes for them to sell. Additional expenses such as storage, insurance, hedging costs, and the like would need to be passed on and could, and could easily exceed an additional five percent discount when they sell, with gold that could easily exceed a hundred dollars per ounce. The rest of my proposed changes, I feel, are more housekeeping to clean up a few items that I feel weren't properly written when this bylaw was first approved. First is the requirement for a Massachusetts driver's license or identification card. This change would allow for any government-issued photo ID, regardless of the state it was issued in, reflecting the fact that many people will travel to see a dealer that have been, that they have been referred to, are in town to settle a family estate, or have an out-of-state license where they have a second home. Second is the removal of a specific company to report purchases to online. In general, I feel no specific company should be listed in any bylaw. There are other reputable options available to law enforcement where purchases can be reported to online. Licensees will reimburse the town for the cost of this service. I'll get more details if you have more questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The third change may not be noticed, but I feel it's important for customers' privacy. That is the removable, the removal of the quantity reporting requirement. This would help keep a client's personal financial information more secure. When someone is selling a quantity, it would simply be listed as plural. The information would still be available to law enforcement as needed. So if someone sells me two Gold Eagles or fifty Gold Eagles, I only have to say that they sold me Gold Eagles. The last change is adding a line to the bylaw that states licenses will be revoked upon a finding of illegal activity and must be renewed yearly. This is probably not a necessary addition as this may already be a part of any license, but it does put it right in the requirements, so there is no question about the penalty. The current by, the proposed, excuse me, the current bylaw does contain some important safeguards, and these would not change. The holding and reporting requirements for jewelry, silver flatware, and related items remains at thirty days to allow for proper identification of stolen items. A photo ID from the seller and an image of the product's purchase is still required. All payments must still be made by check, no cash. Daily reporting to law enforcement remains the same. Detailed records of purchases must still be kept and available to law enforcement. Dealers must still be licensed by the town. Transactions with minors are prohibited. Having a proper scale and other enforcement requirements remain the same. What I am proposing is an updated and refined bylaw that would allow reputable dealers to operate in Kingston and to add to the economic growth of the town while still maintaining strict control over the other, over other types of items subject to theft that would warrant an extended holding period. I would urge the voters to give us some serious consideration and to vote in favor of these changes. Thank you.
Open it up for debate. Yep, state your name and-
Sure. Kevin Johnson, five Summer Street. Just wondered if there was any response from law enforcement, police chief, what have you, on, on this.
Right behind you.
Morris Blaine, Chief of Police. Thank you for that. I've had many conversations with Mr. Pepe. I told him I'm opposed to this. He wants to redefine what Massachusetts general law says is a precious metal. He wants to make it very subjective. He wants to eliminate the protections that are in the bylaws now to protect the citizens of a crime or a potential crime. People have, you know, a workman in the house, you could have caretakers in for elderly people. You don't necessarily know when or if you've had stuff been removed. The thirty-day holding period is pretty standard in all the communities on the South Shore. There's nothing that would prohibit, Mr. Pepe, from- There's nothing that would prohibit Mr. Pepe from doing what he's, you know, wants to do within the current bylaw. Uh, there's just so much, uh, that I, uh, don't agree with, with, with Mr. Pepe, that I don't want to, you know, bring it up on the town meeting floor. I just urge you to protect your fellow citizens in Kingston or the South Shore, um, you know, to, you know, have them so in case they are a victim of a crime, the police departments have the opportunity to, uh, try to get the product back. The holding days are very important. It'll, it allows us, you know, the ability, one, one for the people, people to realize that they are a victim of a crime, and two for police to act on it. Uh, you know, um, I, I think I'm done.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'd like you to respond. I'll, I'll give you your last word, sir. Yes, yes.
Okay, Lorraine Berisio, again, Forty-two Wood Street. In a previous life, I used to be the licensing coordinator in a municipality, and I agree with the chief, the thirty-day protection has to stay in place. As to how gold devalues, I have never seen that. Um, but I agree with the chief. The protections are there for the, the people, not the convenience of the shop owner. The shop owner goes in, he applies for a license, he knows what the MGL is, he knows what the process is. He chooses to go into that business. So now to try to change them, to make his, his work easier, I understand that. But I'm agreeing with the chief, the protection should be for the people, and the thirty days should apply to everybody, because I've seen the result of them tracking stolen jewelry two and three weeks after the theft, because of the system that is in play. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you can respond.
Okay, this does not change the holding period for jewelry. This is strictly for investment metals. The change is for collectible coins and precious metals that people are investing in. There's no change in the jewelry holding period, okay? It is not to make things easier, because I still have to report it, it's whether I put it on the shelf for a day, a week, or thirty days. So it's not making anything any easier. What comes into play, oh, and as far as gold not changing, two months ago, gold was two thousand and fifty dollars. Yesterday, it was eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. It's a two hundred dollar drop in the past sixty days. Six months ago, it was seventeen hundred and fifty. It's a very volatile market. And when investor makes a decision to sell gold at two thousand dollars an ounce, I need to put it on my shelf for thirty days, pay the interest on the money, buy the next deal that comes in, and the next deal that comes in, and, okay? It's an excessive amount of money. That's, you can arrange financing, but you've got to protect yourself on the volatility. And if you're not going to, if you're going to try and protect yourself, it's going to cost you some money. I can hedge the ounces of gold, the likes of that, it's going to cost five percent. So if gold is two thousand dollars, and I'm going to make my margin, which is only typically one to two percent, and I now need to discount that gold another five percent, another hundred dollars, no investor is going to sell me that material, nor should they. And if that's what it comes to, I won't stay in that business, okay? Everything still needs to be reported, okay? Oh, the other, the other, I lose my train of thought here. The other issue that I have is, there's no consistent law in the state that has any consistent holding period. Some towns, and some of them, some of them that are but Kingston, have zero holding period and no reporting requirements. Some towns in the Commonwealth, I checked with a lot of dealers I do business with in the state, a lot of towns strictly, all you have to have is a license to operate. No holding, nothing's required. There's a dealer I do some business with, he functions out of a flea market, where they have no requirements for anything, but in that same town, if he opens a storefront, now he has to hold the material thirty days. That makes no sense to me, why a guy who's at a flea market one week can pack up his stuff and be gone the next week, has no accountability to the town. I have a storefront in Weymouth, I'm looking to put a presence in Kingston, just a private office in Kingston where I can meet with investors. Um, it's not going to be a kiosk at the mall that I buy from everybody. And, I guess that's the way, I'm, I'm looking at it my side. And I'm sorry, chief, but I've tried to meet with you a few times, we've had a couple brief conversations, and you've never been willing to sit down with me and talk about your point of view, so we can work out what makes sense.
Sir, let's not make this personal. He's here now, you stated your opinion, I've given you the floor.
All right.
I've given it to you a second time, so you can have your word, chief.
I just want to remind people that bylaws are for everybody, and if we've, uh, changed the bylaw now, then other, uh, you know, vendors could come in and, and, uh, they too could, you know, um, take advantage of, of Kingston, where, uh, Mr. Pepe was even talking about his, uh, he would be reporting to the police, where he wouldn't be putting down what he brought, you know, took in, the number, the quantity. It's kind of hard to check that if you don't know what you're checking against. Um, you know, it, you know, having a, a location without a sign out front, um, it, uh, it just, it just reeks. And, uh, we used to have, uh, multiple kiosks, like we were just talking about, up at the mall, where we were recovering all types of stolen property, uh, and the thirty days were really good. Thieves don't, uh, if they, you know, take something, they, they don't care where it goes. If they have to present the license or whatever, it, it doesn't matter, they're going to do that. Um, it, this, it, again, the definitions of precious metal are under state law. He wants to redefine them. Um, again, bylaws are basically boilerplates. All the towns have very similar ones. Why would we want to have one that is less, uh, protective of the, uh, you know, citizens? I, I just don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator, someone on the end there.
Thanks, just a quick thing, just to, uh, to back up what Chief's plan just mentioned. It's certainly Mr. Pepe, I don't think anybody disagrees, is a pretty reputable guy, no question about it. But the concern is if we have a lesser holding period for some, some assets, um, you could have a kiosk at the mall. Now, maybe you won't have one, let me finish, but somebody could. And to, to the chief's point, having a lesser holding period than every other community in the South Shore is going to bring people to Kingston to sell their, uh, whatever assets they may have, because it's a lesser or shorter holding period than it would be to go to any other South Shore community. That's the concern we have, not specifically your, uh, specific storefront.
Sir, I'll give you final thoughts, and then we're going to take a vote.
Yeah, I understand it's not a personal thing, and I completely understand why a thirty-day hold was put in. Kingston put in about ten years ago, and I completely understand why they did that. It just, it's not proper for some products. Couple, these are from the state, okay? And I tried, I talked to the Attorney General's Office about getting some clarification on some of their definitions. I'll try and keep this brief. They, Public Safety in Good Order, they have a section for licenses, it's Chapter one forty, under Junk Dealers, they define who a junk dealer would, would be, and I qualify in the first part. The next section says, "The purchase-sale barter of books, prints, coins, or postage stamps shall not be deemed to be the purchase, shall not be deemed to be purchase-sale barter of secondhand articles, within the meaning of this in the preceding section." So that takes me out of that category, being a coin in precious metals dealer. They also look at, um, let me just find it in the note here. Says the requi, they have requirements that if I buy from the public, no matter what type of material it is, I need to keep records of it. That's pretty cut and dry, that's not an, not an issue. They define a financial institution, a dealer in precious metals, stones or jewels, I qualify under that. They define gold, silver, platinum, or bullion, or coins as a monetary instrument. You know, if someone breaks into a house and steals cash, does the bank have to hold it? You know, those have serial numbers on them, you know, it's kind of, some mixed answers here, so. Basically, it's trying to be able to pay people fairly for their investments. If someone steals stuff, they can sell it online, they sell it on Craigslist, eBay, they can drop it in the mail to a lot of houses, you know, trying to compete with that. So that's, that's where I'll stop.
Thank you, sir. Last article. Uh, first off, before we take a vote, thank you to the two police officers in the back, who've been here all afternoon. Um, so this is the last article, um, which is a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the general bylaws as printed in Article thirty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Oh, no.
Let's do that one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Uh, do, do you want to, do you want me to count it? I think it doesn't pass, but I'll count it if you.
I think you're right, it doesn't pass, but I guess I should put Jeffrey into it. Let's count it.
Okay, that's fine, I'll do that for you.
We're here, let's do it.
Can you take out your, uh, purple cards, if you still have them?
Let's take it.
All in favor of the amendment in Article thirty-seven, please raise your card. That's fine.
Did he, did he couldn't stick it up?
How many do you have?
Two.
Two? We're getting it. How many? Nine. All those opposed, take out your cards? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Fifteen.
Twenty-five to eleven, motion, uh, Article thirty-seven fails. I, uh, hold on one second, uh, two and nine, and then fifteen and ten. Um, that's the last of it. The last thing we have here is a motion to dissolve this, uh, annual town meeting.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice day, thank you for being here.